And this Southbridge Town Council meeting on Monday, September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty. Seven P M. This meeting is being conducted via remote participation. In calling this meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order, suspend certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty eight, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the town council is being conducted via remote participation only. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southridge Cable Access Channel one ninety-two or by the remote information noted below. We'll post a record of this meeting on the town's website at W W W dot C I dot Southbridge dot M A dot U S as soon as we're able to. A roll call vote is required for all votes taken under this order. At this. At this time, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item three, considering set the town council meeting in minutes.
Did you want to do roll call?
Of Monday. Oh, roll call. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Go ahead, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Catrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo. Counselor Marketti.
Counsel Lazo. Uh, Counsel Lazo is after.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Just give me a second. I'm just gonna rename Counselor Ryan for the record because there's a transcript of this being done. Okay, thank you. Item three, considering set the town council meeting in minutes of Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, um, any errors, corrections, or omissions? Counsel Dow?
Yeah, I, you think I should, uh, abstain because I ha- I end up the meeting at the end?
Uh, you were present, so, I mean, you can still take a vote. You were present at that meeting, so. If you feel comfortable, it's up to you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah, I've got a couple, I've got a couple of things with Chairman. Let me see here. Item number ten. Um, no, sorry, that was just a note, that's not a question, correction. Um, let's see, item number fifteen, uh, where it mentions, it talks about, uh, where'd I go? Dave Adams as being, I also, I also wanted to mention that I had, I had asked for an update of what the, what he, what that board has done, and he provided it. Um, item number sixteen, it should read the appointment of Robert Barrett the third. Uh, let's see, item number seventeen, the third lineup says legislation should be legislators. Um, item number nineteen, where it mentions it's the fifth lineup, it says Ms. Clements, it should be, it actually should be, for clarification, Airport Commission Chairman Rick Clements, it wasn't Denise. Um, and also, I think in that item and item number twenty, we should probably note that, uh, that Judge, since it mentions that Joe had shown up, Joe Dow had shown up, it should be probably noted that he abstained on those two votes. And, uh, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counsel Ryan, do you have anything?
I think it's his time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other counselors? In unroll call to approve as amended.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Catrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Abstain.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Marketti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
And Counselor Steves.
Yes.
Subcommittee reports, General Government Counselor Steves.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I haven't had a meeting recently, however, I do have one tomorrow night after planning development at seven. And we're gonna be addressing several specific items, including the couple of uh, changes that need to be made into the pets bylaw that we just approved, it got caught after printing. Um, we've got, I'm gonna be talking about a new wetlands bylaw, and we're gonna be bringing up the issue about, uh, that we brought up at the last council meeting regarding how to, how to organize seating people on boards and commissions. Then that's tomorrow at seven.
Thank you. Tom, the Public Works, Counsel Marketti.
But thank you. Um, D P W Subcommittee held a meeting on September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Uh, remotely, the meeting was called to order at seven P M. Uh, we discussed the pavement management study committee priorities, and the committee recommended priorities, and that's on tonight's agenda, number eighteen. We discussed the pavement management study funding. The committee recommended funding, so a funding source, and that's on tonight's agenda, number nineteen. We discussed the procurement and bidding process, that was just for discussion only and no action. Uh, we discussed the update on council chambers, air conditioning installation. This was referred back to the town manager and the D P W director for further evaluation and to report back to the town council. We discussed appropriation of the D P U ride sharing surcharge, the D P W road materials to purchase asphalt for road repairs, and this is on tonight's meeting, agenda item number thirteen. Uh, we discussed the bid results for, for pavement and drainage improvement, two thousand and twenty projects, and award the contract. This is for the Brentwood Drive, Prospect Street, and Marsh Avenue projects, and that's on tonight's agenda, number fourteen. We discussed the transfer from sale of real estate receipts reserved to road improvement fund to cover additional cost of the pavement management improvement projects, including police details, and that's on tonight's agenda, number fifteen. We discussed appropriation of stabilization funds to road improvement funds for the remainder of the costs associated with the projects, including estimated cost of police details. That's on tonight's agenda, item number sixteen. We discussed the bid results for the Main Street Intersection Improvement Project. The D P W director asked that the motion be postponed for further evaluation. No action was taken. Uh, we discussed the quote results for the Elm Street Bridge over the Kohasse. Engineering proposal to be funded with chapter ninety funds, and this is on tonight's agenda, number seventeen. Under new business, Counsel Dow asked about street sweeping schedule this year. The D P W director said the streets are swept in the spring and the fall, and are due soon after the leaves fall. I asked about the Mill Street Bridge update. The D B W director said she received the go-ahead for the Mill Street Bridge temporary repair. The bids will be going out within the next couple of weeks. And finally, Counsel Dow asked about allowing parking for residents on the bridge on River Street. The D P W director said she would take a look at it. Uh, the meeting was adjourned at nine fourteen P M. I believe we have another meeting scheduled, um, I think October fifth. But it hasn't been finalized yet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel Marketti, October fifth, is that right before the town council meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry. It may not be October fifth. I just, I received an email for it, and I, I tried to log on to find exactly what date it was, so I'll, I'll post it.
Okay, thank you.
It may not, it may not be on the fifth. I just received the, an email on it, and, uh, for some reason, I wasn't able to log on today.
Okay, Heather just sent a message, uh, saying it's October fifteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Education and Human Services, Counsel Catrona.
Immuted. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Education Human Services held a meeting on Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. On the agenda this evening are numbers ten, eleven, and twelve. Ten is the recommendation of an appointment, and eleven and twelve are for surplus, all passed four zero to recommend the full council. I have no meetings scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Plan and Development, Counsel Adams.
Hey, Mr. Chair, we had no meetings since our last town council meeting. I have one scheduled for tomorrow night at six P M. Uh, obviously, there's nothing here on this schedule, uh, this agenda this evening, uh, from the plan and development. Thank you.
Thank you. Protection of persons and property, Counsel Lazo is not here tonight. I believe there is no meeting scheduled and had no meeting since the last meeting. Special Committee reports, Curbside Advisory Committee, Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a meeting with the town manager next week, and then we'll be setting up a, um, uh, setting up, uh, beginning with you personally to set up a day for the presentation to the town council and to the residents of Southbridge. So I have.
Thank you. On the COVID nineteen public health and safety briefing, I asked, uh, Director of Inspections and the Health Department, Andrew Pelletier, to make a brief presentation, answer any questions that councils may have. I'd like to thank Andy for, uh, providing us the information throughout the, uh, last couple of weeks of daily counts of, uh, where they stand on, uh, uptick in cases and, and, uh, those that are closed, and as everybody can see, there has been a uptick in, uh, cases. We were in the green, we went back down, we went down to white, and we're back into the green. And I guess, uh, I'll let him explain where we're at, uh, going forward. Andrew?
Good morning, um, good evening. Um, COVID is on a roller coaster right now. Um, we've had six thousand two hundred plus tests done for the, uh, town of Southbridge. Um, keeping in mind that our population is own, is sixteen thousand nine hundred, we are better than one-third of our population tested, or the equivalent of one-third of the population tested. Of that, we have two hundred and fourteen total cases. Um, unfortunately, eleven of those cases came over the last week. We've been in the green and the red periodically up and down. I mean, the green and the gray periodically up and down. But I definitely, doing the calculations, we can suffer nine, an average of nine cases across fourteen days, and that'll keep us in the green. If we, if we go nine or above, we end up in the yellow. And I believe we are somewhere between nine and twelve over the last two-week period. So I anticipate we're gonna end up in the yellow as of this week's report. Um, unfortunately, it was so dense that this week is also going to affect next week's report. So I anticipate yellow for this week and next week, depending on what happens for the remainder of the week. Um, other updates regarding the, uh, COVID. We are still in phase three, step one, although the governor is slowly expanding that. Um, a couple of clarifications I want to make. The governor opened bar seating. Um, I believe he used the wrong word with that. He should have opened counter seating. Um, the bars are still closed, and I believe will remain closed until phase four. Uh, restaurants are allowed to sit at the, at the restaurant bar or essentially the counter. Um, that's what he meant when he said that bar seating is gonna be allowed. Um, so he's made a few adjustments to the restaurants. You can now have parties of ten instead of parties of five. I mean, parties of six. You still have to meet the six-foot separation unless the restaurant has set up the, um, poly barriers. Self-service stations at the retail, I know there's been, the counselors have probably heard a lot about the Cumberland Farms having to serve you their coffee. You can't go up and get it. As of the twenty eighth of this week, self-service drinks at retail, not, not, uh, bulk service at grocery stores or anything like that. Just the retail self-service drinks is now open to, people can get their own. They don't need to be served anymore. We are anticipating Halloween. The Board of Health is meeting next week to discuss it and possibly make some decisions on, do we want to restrict any activities at Halloween? I've been in contact with the Deputy Chief of Police regarding some of the, uh, events that the police department is very highly involved in. And we're gonna put a lot before my board on Thursday for them to consider what they want to do with trick-or-treating and trunk-or-treating and other such events. The state, the C D C is discouraging trick-or-treating and other holiday events. They have taken a slightly more, I don't want to use the word cavalier, but relaxed attitude, and I think it's because they fear the alternative. We don't allow trick-or-treating, then are we gonna get more parties with large gatherings? Um, trick-or-treating, generally speaking, kind of respects the definition of close contact being no more than, uh, being fifteen minutes or less. I mean, close contact is fifteen minutes or more without a mask. Um, trick-or-treating really doesn't offend that too much. The biggest fear is in the transmizo of the disease through the inanimate objects, the candy and, and other things that you touch. Um, school, I am working closely with the head nurse, the COVID nurse at the school. We're coming up with our plans on how we are going to avoid, not avoid, how we are going to work our way through the HIPAA laws as far as if a child is sent home, it becomes a border health case. Does that allow school nurses to be privy to the facts? So we're working through that right now. Um, I'm working with Karen Cheka, who is the head nurse at the school for COVID, um, and I think we'll, we'll have no problem with that. I did have one student-aged child, one student-aged person, um, sixteen, which would probably put him at a sophomore, uh, junior, maybe, um, who tested positive. Uh, my follow-up with that case and with all of his contacts, um, luckily found out that he's not one of, I, I won't say luckily, I never want this on anybody, but he's not a Southbridge student. He is a Webster student who is learning remotely. Um, other than that, I am just trying to keep up with these cases as fast as they're coming in. I spend anywhere from one to three hours after work each day, calling the cases, doing the, uh, contact tracing, um, and hopefully keeping up and getting closed as quick as I can to. I believe we currently have eleven open cases.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for, uh, Ms. Counsel Marketti?
Thank you. Um, through you to Andy, uh, you may have, uh, answered this once before, but your numbers don't include the nursing home, correct?
My numbers include the nursing home where their residence is in Southbridge. So if they have been admitted for life, my numbers would include that. But if they are officially a Charlton resident who's doing rehab at the nursing home, then my numbers do not include that, and I do not have privy to that.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the eleven cases, they're all, most of them related, or they're different, uh, residents? Thank you.
I call, I call every one of these cases, and I try to find common links. I have one family of three, so three of these instances are now are a family in a single household, and then I have two other ones in the open cases that are also a family in a single household. So of the eleven, I have five that I have a, that I can link, three and two, that I can, to have links to other cases.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counsel Steves?
Um, thank you. I mean, you, I thought, I thought you said a couple of seconds ago, Andy, um, about you were talking, I thought you were talking briefly about Halloween. Could you clarify? Um, are, what are we going to be doing as far as like the, um, the, um, Horribles Parade and those kind of things? Are we gonna be doing stuff with that this year?
I've talked to, I've talked to the Deputy Chief. We both kind of agree that we cannot think of any way that you could hold a parade and contain the crowds to less than fifty people, which is the state guidelines. Um, also, the parade itself, if we meet the state guidelines, the parade is gonna be about four and a half thousand miles long because we have to stay a certain distance apart from each other. So our attitudes out of the gate are that the horrible parades will probably be canceled this year. Trunk or treat is an event that you hold at one location, and it kind of defeats the purpose of trying to keep people separate. So my board will have to take that up at the meeting on Thursday of next week. Um, and trick-or-treat is still, again, the state is not discouraging trick-or-treat. They just want it done with caution. So, um, those are the three items I think that are the biggest issue. What we're afraid of, if, if we make it too restrictive, people are gonna find ways on their own to entertain themselves, which will include parties and gatherings.
Okay, thanks. I'll definitely check in on the, probably the Board of Health meeting next time to see what you guys decide on. Thanks.
Thank you.
Andy, do you have a date for the Board of Health meeting?
The Board of Health meeting is the, I believe it's the first October in, I mean, the first October, Thursday, the first Thursday in October, but I will double-check on that and get it back to the board, I mean, back to the council. It's either the first or second Thursday.
Okay, and, uh, any follow-up question? Uh, any colleagues in the other towns that you had conversation with, especially like trick-or-treat? I see, um, in Webster, over the weekend, they had a, a dock, dock, uh, trick-or-treat, like people could go with their boats around to different docks and do like a, a trick-or-treating on docks. Have you had conversations with the colleagues throughout the other, uh, area communities of what they're doing?
We have a formal meeting twice every week of South Central Board of Health Directors, and also, we are in a constant, um, text chat about everything going on. Um, generally speaking, it seems like about half of them are canceling the trick-or-treating this year. Um, they're trying to find alternative, half times, alternative distractions, but I haven't found anything that is less encouraging of gathering than trick-or-treating is. Trick-or-treating is basically a household group goes out. Very rarely do you get large groups of kids hanging around together. They run past each other. But, um, what I've seen of trick-or-treating, unless you go up on Marcy Street or, um, that other street at the end of Marcy, which is always a million kids every year. Um, trick-or-treating is not a really a gathering thing. It's more of individuals running on the streets. So I feel, I feel safer with a trick-or-treating than, than having a party or a localized event.
Come up to my house.
Yeah, mine as well. All right, anybody, anybody else? All right, Andy, thank you.
Thank you.
We do, we do have a council meeting, uh, next week too, so, uh, please, uh, uh, make, make yourself available for any updates, maybe on next Monday quickly as well. Counsel Adams?
Anytime you guys, anytime you guys need me on it.
All right, Counsel Adams may have a question. Counsel Adams?
No, no questions. Just wanna clarify that, or point out that the Board of Health meeting is on the tenth.
It's on the tenth, okay.
I just checked the calendar.
Chairman's announcements, um, one, I'd just like to, uh, recognize, uh, Esteban Carrasco, former Chair of the Council, Attorney Caprera. Uh, they had the prayer march on Saturday. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go because I was at another event. Um, but it did look like they had a very successful, uh, prayer march, so thank you for that. Did have the opportunity to attend the Southridge Business Partners meeting. They're back, uh, in-person meetings. Couple other councils were there. We got to introduce the town manager, so that was a great event, be able to, uh, have the new town manager, uh, interact with some of our business partners, and look forward to their continued meetings. Uh, I think everybody knows too, as a council, we're invited to go for Green Meadows. Um, that was a great tour to see the development of that, uh, mill building and the process, uh, product, uh, progress that they've made. Looking forward to the opening of that facility. Um, like to also congratulate Trinity Catholic Academy on their twenty-fifth golf tournament, uh, yeah, uh, Saturday. It was a great day of, uh, golf. My golfing, uh, team, uh, did pretty well and appreciate that, so congratulate, uh, that school on their twenty-fifth golf tournament. Then lastly, I just, uh, update to the counselors, because I know there's been some conversations, emails back and forth, and apologize for any confusion on the council's decision for remote meetings. Um, we did, uh, meet as a council, well, vote as a council back on, I believe it was August tenth, that we would, uh, conduct remote meetings, and I think with the exception of one Subcommittee, every other Subcommittee meeting has been, uh, remotely. Uh, the proviso on that was that we would, uh, evaluate this again, uh, within sixty days, so I anticipate, uh, on the August fifth meeting to have another further conversation. And I think a couple councils have brought up some, uh, possible alternatives, but I think it does warrant a further conversation, and we'll be working on that, um, through the next week or so, to see where we go on that, because I don't see, uh, given the numbers of COVID-related, uh, cases, that, uh, we'll be in a position to increase the capacity at the town hall to allow a greater number of people to participate and, uh, feel comfortable that we'd be able to have meetings there. So we'll have to take a look at any alternatives. Uh, but there's a lot of issues that would go into that as to either cable access, the ability to have microphones there so people in the audience could hear, so, uh, until we work those out, we'll continue, but we'll, because it was on for a time, time certain date, we'll, uh, bring that back up, uh, next time. And that's all I have. Uh, town manager announcements. Town Manager McCall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've continued to meet with the department heads as well as some of the councils that come in. I have, as I've indicated previously, an open door. Anybody wants to stop in and talk, and that goes for residents as well of the community. I've attended, um, the E H S and D P W Subcommittee meetings recently, and the Fire Station Building Committee meeting. And as you noted, I went to the South, Southbridge Business Partnership meeting last week. Um, I've made contact and spoken with our state delegation, Representative Durant and Senator Fatman, and we've talked about some of the issues pertinent to the town. Um, I've been working with the department heads, including our D P W director to the point about the D P W Subcommittee. Um, today, um, head of Lake Police Staff had the H V A C contractors looking at the council chambers, and she could probably elaborate on that later. I'm continuing to work with the Inspection Department, Fire Department, and our State Fire Services to help expedite with the Marcy Street closing um, relative to the code compliance. Uh, I was contacted by Rick Clements earlier this week. We went over some paperwork, and he also informed me that there will be an opening on the commission that John Trefon, or, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, has, uh, indicated that he will be stepping down. We have issued an offer to our, uh, candidate in the D P W Operations Management Position, and we anticipate that will be accepted pending notification. And, um, lastly, I, you know, I'm still working on some of the other issues that have come up this week, but it's going well so far, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Marketti?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, uh, the town manager mentioned something about the Marcy Street closing. I don't know what that's about. I must be out of loop on that one.
Uh, i- if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that's the Well Street School. Um, when I came on board, um, it was, I would receive some transition notes, and what we're trying to do is help expedite the closing, I guess. That, that's been, that project has been moving along for quite some time, and we're just trying to advance that so that the project can close in time so that the, um, the, the buyers can get in there before the end of the, uh, construction cycle and do some work on the project and tighten up for the winter, so we're trying to move that along as quickly as possible.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Moving on. That has called in that wishes to address town council on anything not on the agenda. Anyone? I only see one other caller. I'm not sure who that is, but. They're muted. Okay, moving on. Then I'm, uh, ten, vote to confirm the appointment of Holly Cristo as citizen member to the Education and Human Services Subcommittee, effective immediately through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, or until another is appointed. State, her state ethics training is in good standard. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second. Uh, Counsel Catrona, this came through your Subcommittee. Any recommendation?
Yes, it did. The council recommended four zero to appoint Holly Cristo as a citizen member, and we still have one more opening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? See, not roll call?
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Catrona.
Yes.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Jovan.
Yes.
Counsel Marketti.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yeah.
And Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item eleven, vote to declare a surplus pole vault, landing mats, and declare said items to be auctioned, sold, donated, or disposed of. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion. A motion by Counsel Catrona, second by Counsel Adams. Uh, Counsel Catrona, any, uh, information from your Subcommittee?
Again, this is for some pole vault, uh, landing mats that are no longer Again, this is for some pole vault landing mats that are no longer necessary to school. And this was voted to recommend to council with a 4-0 vote. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything to add on that? Because I know we had a conversation about the newness of these mats, they had never been used, they were purchased by Superintendent Ely back in the day when we opened the school. You had some thoughts about how to dispose of it because of the value of it and not just dispose of them as trash, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. What I did last week, I made contact with an athletic director of a local high school and asked them, you know, what would be the normal process of trying to put this out? Is there a school auction site or something that where he would go? And that he said in the instances of a specific piece of equipment like this, it's because it's unique and the cost associated with it oftentimes the manufacturer, the distributor of those products may be interested in taking them back for resale, so I've tried to, I got the information this morning from Mike Como about the make and model and some information. I already put a call into a distributor of that type of product just to see if there's, there's any case that we may be able to get them to to want to buy it back as a used item, so I'm, I'm working on that, Mr. Chairman, and I'll keep the council advised.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council Steve?
Just a quick question, do you actually have a value, a dollar value for these things right now?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, through you to Counsel Steves, when I was looking to find the distributor and the manufacturer, some of these brand new are going well over $10,000. I don't know what the, the value of this, the document that was provided to me by Mr. Como had a date of 2012, but it's my understanding that despite it being apparently eight years old, there's very little use. So I would imagine there may be someone out there that would find it of value. The only thing that I, I would have to look at, and I've got to delve into it further, is whether it meets all current NCAA and other school sports requirements, because as you may know, those things can change from time to time. So that's something else I'll have to research once I make contact or get a call back from the distributor of the sports equipment.
Thank you. Any further? See none, roll call?
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
And Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 12, vote to declare a surplus old cafeteria tables from East Road School and declare they be auctioned, sold, donated or disposed of, is there a motion?
A motion.
Second. Motion by Counsel Ryan, now seconded by Counsel Catrona. Counsel Catrona, same information from you?
Yes, recommended to council with a 4-0 vote. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything else to add on this one?
Mr. Chairman, again, what we'll look at doing if declared surplus is we'll try and put it on an online auction site in an effort to get any type of money back. If it sits there for a period of time and we do not have anything, we'll either look to donate it or scrap it.
Okay, it's my understanding that these, just for the public out there, because I'm sure they can, why are you buying new tables? My understanding from the school department, when they came, attended our meeting, that these were purchased from a grant. It weren't town money, so just for the public, they weren't just buying tables for, for just any reason, that they did have a grant on that, that's correct?
That's my understanding of it.
Thank you. Counselor Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a quick question, even if it was a grant, it's ultimately public money. I was curious about what kind of condition are these tables actually in and why did they see a need to replace them? I mean, tables, I mean, I can see tables being, you know, deteriorating over time, but what kind, what do they look like now? I unfortunately couldn't make that meeting, so.
There was a picture in your packet, I'm not sure if you looked at the picture of some of them, they don't look to be in terrible shape, but. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If it is just a recommendation, also the charter school in Southbridge, they always need to donate something and help before we dispose of them, maybe that will help them. You know, like, I, I know they're always looking for something to keep that school going, for donation and people help, so before we dispose of them, maybe we can check with them if they have use for them, if it's not in really bad condition, that would be nice before we dispose of them, thank you.
Thank you. I do know Mr. Como did mention that they, he did contact area schools and put it out there for any schools that need it locally, so I believe that was the case. But they've already reached out to those schools, but could follow up as well. Counsel Adams?
You answered my question, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See none, roll call?
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
And Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 13, vote to approve an appropriation of $728.10 from project number 68100 Department of Public Utilities, ride share and surcharge to account number 001499.553300. DPW road materials supplied toward the purchase of asphalt for road repairs, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
My Counsel Dow, discussion? Counsel Marquetti?
This was voted on at the DPW subcommittee meeting, it was 3 to nothing favorable. I'll let Heather discuss, explain this if she wants, I think it's just, we get a, we get some money from the state for Uber drivers and Lyft drivers and that goes to us, and then they're going to turn around and use it up for the asphalt. Thank you.
Any follow up questions for Heather, or Heather, any additional information? Counsel Adams, go ahead.
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman, thank you to Heather, or the town manager, with the $728, how much money do you actually have in that DPW road materials account?
I guess I can take a stab at that, that is our regular budget account, so I think this year it was budgeted at $40,000, so it's just a drop in the bucket of our regular. It, I would say this is going to buy us about 10 tons of asphalt. Which is, yeah, it's a, it's a nice sized patch, but not a huge patch.
Okay, thank you, Heather, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See none, roll call?
Counseler Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan? Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
And Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 14, vote to ratify the contract with PJ Keaton for the total amount included in alternate number one of $516,633.20 from Road Improvement Fund Account Project 9133 for the paving and drainage improvement 2020 project, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second by Counsel Adams. Counsel Marquetti?
This was also approved 3 to nothing at the DPW Subcommittee favorable vote. There were a couple of questions about this project for, that Heather, I think, was going to answer tonight, one was how long would it, would it take to finish this project? That was one of the questions. The other one was about cold weather pouring, which Heather explained that they would be keeping an eye on that. Thank you.
Heather, anything further to add to that?
Sure, I just wanted to say that we did meet on, on site with the parent low bidder. We asked them some question, they wanted to go over some of the scope of work, they're very eager to get started. They are planning to start as soon as next Monday, as long as the contract gets awarded and we can get it signed this week. So their plan is to be done well before Thanksgiving, moving the project right along.
Counsel Marquetti?
I just wanted to add that this is for the Brentwood Drive, Prospect Street and Marsh Avenue paving project and paving and drainage, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Catrona, are you raising your hand?
Yes, I did, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. As I stated in Subcommittee, and I just still have to state now, I'm I'm in favor of the projects, however, just not in favor of utilizing stabilization funds to do these projects. And would like to find a different funding mechanism in which to do so. I know a couple of years ago, there was a, well, back in 2012, I know the study was done, the engineering study was done, I think the town paid 30, 37,000 for that study, without going too into detail. And I know we were putting aside through around St. Angelo roughly $100,000 a year and what is, what is the current dollar amount left in the road account? Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town manager or Heather?
Town Manager, do you have that information or?
I do not have that information at the ready, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, DPW Director. DPW Director is raising her hand, so Heather?
Yep, I think you do have in your packet, I did put a summary of how much the project was. Current available funds in the road improvement account are $494,701.92.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel Adams?
Mr. Chairman, I just, to Counsel Catrona, did you say this was coming from stabilization money?
There's a small amount coming, $8,578.24 coming out of stabilization.
Okay, no, thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Counsel, I was just, that's why I was worried about the two thirds vote here, that that was coming, this 516 was coming out, thank you.
No, just that small amount. Counsel Catrona, did you have anything further?
Nothing more at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, I'm glad, this is Heather and the town manager, and, and to the DPW Chair, I appreciate you guys pushing this forward. This shows part of the plan that we have for road improvements within the town itself. For those that say we don't have a plan, there actually is one. I just want to reiterate that it took a long time for these roads to turn into what they are and it's going to take some time to rebuild those roads. So I just wanted to push out that the council, or at least on my point, is that we've been pushing this road improvement for some time, for the last couple of years. And with this road study, that kind of helped out as well, so I just want to thank Heather for all the hard work her and her team are doing, along with the town manager, and thank you to the DPW Chair, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other counselors have anything? Counsel Ryan, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counsel Dow, do you have something? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Heather too for working hard and I'm supporting any money come from anywhere to finish the road and improve the road, so I'm not gonna stop project for $8,000. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? See none, roll call?
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
No.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
And Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 15, vote to approve the transfer of $38,353.04 from project number 65220 sale of real estate receipts reserved to project number 9133 Road Improvement Fund to cover a portion of the additional cost of the pavement improvement project including police details. There a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Your second. Your motion is second. Counsel Marquetti?
This was also approved at the DPW Subcommittee with a 3 to 0 favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any other discussion? See none, roll call?
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
No.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
And Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Item 16, vote to approve an appropriation of $8,578.24 from Fund 840 Stabilization Fund project number 9133 Road Improvement Fund for the remainder of the costs associated with the pavement improvement project including estimated cost of police details. See cost breakdown attachment 10. This requires a two thirds roll call vote, is there a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Motion is second by Counsel Ryan. Counsel Marquetti?
This was approved by a 3 to 0 favorable vote recommended to the town council to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Dow?
Just, this money, it came from a real estate account. It was put on the side, so it's not something we ask in through a different account, so Heather, she can explain it more, where that money come from?
The stabilization fund? This is from stabilization.
The
I, I'm sorry. You froze up for a minute. Wait a minute, I want to just make sure you're asking the question, I, I do not misunderstanding you. Are you asking about the
From somewhere, real estate we sold in town, you know, like, some money was put on the side from selling some real estate, if I'm not wrong?
We've already gone on that motion, we've already voted that one, we're now on the stabilization one.
Okay, sorry, I'm kind of confused a little bit.
Okay, that's all right, so, I, I mean, we can follow up afterwards if, if you have a question on it, but we're on the stabilization fund question.
Good, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Just my sense on the stabilization through previous speaker who had concerns about stabilization. I do realize that the question about stabilization and, and we elected to use that. However, if I, if I recall correctly, in the last budget cycle, we scrubbed a lot of capital accounts that were monies that were appropriated to specific capital that projects had, had either closed out with monies left over, or projects that hadn't been started or no longer needed. And we put that money into stabilization in anticipation to make sure that we had some money, so if a project such as this came up, we'd have some additional money. So I think as a council, we did a very good job of looking at all accounts to see my, some of those project counts, I think, had been open since 2014, 2015, monies that had never been continually used and were in special accounts, and we did that, trying to come up with the best plan that if we had some roads money that we needed, that we'd have something additional if bids came in a little bit higher, to the point of, another previous speaker, we worked hard to make sure that we had money built into operating budget last year of 100,000, this year of 200,000, to make it 300,000. So I, I understand the concern with stabilization, but we did have a specific plan, to Counsel Adams' point, that we had a plan in case some funding went above, so I just want to state that for the record. Is there any other discussion? Okay, see none, roll call?
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
No.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
And Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Motion carries on a 7-1 vote, required meeting the threshold for two thirds roll call vote. Item 715, vote to ratify the contract with VHB for the total amount of $169,240,000 for the Elm Street Bridge over Cohassie Brook Engineering, be funded with Chapter 90 funds. This engineering will be in support of the Small Bridge Grant in the amount of $500,000 for the repair and replacement of that bridge. dollars for the repair and replacement of that bridge. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Your second. Okay, just, uh, Counsel Marquetti, you want to give a brief first, and then I think Heather's ready to answer questions.
Sure, uh, this was also a three to zero favorable motion, uh, vote to recommend to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Heather?
Um, I, actually, a very minor, um, correction. When VHB did their contract, they realized there was a math error in their submittal for their proposal, and they reduced the price to one hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. So, if we can amend the motion to reflect what is actually in the contract, not what was in the proposal, they found a math error.
Okay. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, make a motion to amend this agenda item and replace one hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred forty dollars with one hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Counsel Marquetti, and discussion on the amendment. Okay, I'll take a roll call vote on changing the dollar amount from one sixty-nine to forty to one sixty-nine, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Roll call?
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
And Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, any other discussion on the, uh, agenda item itself? Any information needed by anybody? See none, roll call?
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
And Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eighteen, vote that full council consider adopting the following list of priority roads that need to be repaired and paved in South Bridge. Dresser Street, Madison Drive, Worcester Street, Hamilton Street, River Street, Mechanic Street, and Crane Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Your second. Motion is second by Counsel Ryan. Uh, uh, go to Counsel Marquetti first.
Uh, yes, um, this was voted on by the, uh, DPW Subcommittee with a three to nothing favorable recommendation to council. I just want to say that, uh, a few things first. Um, when I ran for town council, I ran for road and, and street and road improvement. That was one of my main goals. So, um, I think that I've been waiting for a year now to take further action on road improvements. I know that we're working on Main Street, South Street, and West Street, but there's a lot of other roads in town that need improvement. A lot of residents have been complaining about the roads and wanting us to do something about it. And, uh, I sat on the DPW Subcommittee last year, and every time there was a meeting, I was asked, what do you want on the agenda? And I would say, I want the roads, and, and I know, and it never got on the agenda except for what, uh, the DPW Director wanted for priorities. So, I asked the, uh, the council, the Subcommittee to take a, a vote on road priorities. Uh, what road should be done first, second, third, et cetera. And then I asked that we recommend it to the full council for fi- final action. Now, I, I do want to note that Counsel Steves did ask to include Sale Street, and I see it was inadvertently left off the list. So if he'd like to amend this to add Sale Street back on the list, that's fine with me. If, uh, other counselors have some streets that they think are a priority over, uh, in addition to these streets, um, I don't have a problem with you adding it. I just ask that you keep in mind, we're train, we're trying to do this on a priority basis only to try and keep the cost down. Um, the, the full pavement management study, uh, all the roads in town would be like seventeen million. I know that's not, it's something that the town probably would not go for, but if we could just limit it to some of the priority roads, the roads that are the main, mainly traveled roads that need the most work, and I think that that's what we should do. And these are the streets that we added. And if, Counsel Steves, if you want to amend it to add Sale Street, that would be fine. I just ask that the, the council please support this. Um, I think it's something that the residents want. And, uh, take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'll just, uh, we'll add that street as a friendly amendment, uh, without opposition for discussion purposes. Uh, Counsel Steves, did you have any other thing else?
I did. Um, thank you for mentioning that, Counsel Marquetti. I, I could, I knew that I had added another street, but I couldn't remember which one it was. Um, also, I just wanted to point out that during the course of the discussion at DPW, uh, we just want to make sure that this is, this list is not intended to inter- interfere with the, the ongoing projects. We want to see these be done, what, we wanted the, we want the ongoing projects to get done. Um, and have these be the kind of priorities for the ones that, the, the next one, the next row of, of projects to get, that need to get done. Um, and I know that, uh, I believe, I know that we have, uh, uh, besides the one that Counsel Marquetti mentioned, we also have Gulfwood that's in somewhere in process. Um, so all of these things, so the wor- the worst of the roads really are the ones that are getting done right now, which is necessary. And some of these other things, I was also thinking, um, that I was actually on the way down from the airport today, on the way from our, from our executive session, and it occurred to me that maybe we ought to look at Cliff Street as well. Because that's a kind of dangerous street. Um, but that may be more other issues that, I don't know if that should be necessarily high priority as far as some of this, this particular list goes, but just for, for future thought. And that's all I had at the moment.
Hey, Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to you. Uh, the reason why, I mean, all the road needs to be done. I'm sure the citizen want all the town to be nice and all of it done, but we recommend those, those the main road into town and out town. Uh, some of them is, I always go back on River Street. We have the big company, uh, a hundred plus employee working there, and that road is terrible, so that's one of the main reasons I recommend that road, just to look for the people working there, for the big company. Uh, it's very bad. I mean, I understand Heather, she mentioned something about the bridge. Uh, we don't have, uh, the budget for it right now, but I think we can do the road, and then when, when we're ready for the bridge, we can do it after. So, can just, I hope you guys look at it as a second project, all these road, the main road, it's important. Uh, every road important, but this is very important to be moved on as a second project for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything at this point?
Um, I have, Mr. Chairman, reviewed the pavement management plan. Um, you know, I'm not sure if you'd be prudent to have a general discussion amongst the the council with regard to priorities. I understand, uh, when I looked at it, that most of these have the surface rating that puts them in ones that need major rehabilitation. Although I, I have, as I said, I've been meeting with the department heads, and I did have a lengthy conversation today with, uh, Heather Blake, the, uh, DPW Director, and one of the things that we did talk about is that there are streets from time to time. And I think South Street was one of them, that there are going to be other projects affecting these streets, and that they will get addressed in due time, and that there may be issues pertaining to these streets, such as water and other utilities that are underneath them, that may, uh, warrant them to be, um, you know, not a priority at this time. Perhaps the DPW Director could comment here as well, but I don't know if it warrants a larger discretion with everybody as an overall policy of which, um, which streets we need to do, or an overall presentation of, it's my understanding that the pavement management plan hasn't been formally presented or discussed at council, so if that's something, uh, you want me to put together, put it on an agenda, we can bring it and talk about it, go over it. You just let me know, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Marquetti?
Well, I, I think setting priorities is the prerogative of the council, and by such, by its committee that's, um, charged with examining the road issues. And, uh, that would be the, uh, DPW Subcommittee. The pavement management study was done in June, and now we're here almost in October, so, and it was presented at a time, at a Subcommittee meeting, uh, I think before you came on board. But, uh, like I said, I feel that we do have a obligation. Residents want us to fix the roads. I would ask the counselors to please support this. I mean, I've, I've supported other things that the counselors wanted, and I'm, I'm asking you to support this now, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I agree that there, there needs to be a, a list of priorities, uh, when it comes to our roads. I think a lot of us counselors ran on the fact that we wanted to fix the infrastructure within the town. I don't think it was just one person or two. Um, and, and we, over the last couple of years, we've actually put that plan together, uh, regardless of what anybody else says. But I, I will look at, I, I took a look at the numbers, um, and I watched the, uh, recording of the meeting. I noticed that out of the eight streets, three of them are major repairs, two are minor, and two are, uh, preventive maintenance on them. And obviously, there's varying costs, and like the town manager stated, there is, uh, the, the fact that there may be a sewer, water, even gas system that needs to be evaluated. Um, when we put these priorities in place, that's great, but how do, you know, the next agenda item is talking about funding these things, and this is a three million dollar project just for these eight streets right off the bat, without water, without, uh, uh, sewer, without gas lines that we haven't even taken a look at yet. I guess my, my question here is, out of those eight, what made, um, you guys decide like, uh, preventive maintenance, um, want to redo some of these roads when they're, when they are preventive maintenance, when they stated on here? Maybe somebody can answer that question.
Counsel Marquetti, you want to respond?
Uh, what, I think what we're doing is looking at the major roads that people use to come in and out of South Bridge. That's what we're taking a look at. Some of these roads I've driven on that are considered minor or preventive maintenance. I don't know who came up with that. I mean, River Street is definitely has a problem all the way up to Crane Street, so I don't know how that's just preventive maintenance. Because I've driven on that road, and it, it looks like it needs more work than just preventive or minor. Um, we're just trying to look at the major roads that people travel every day. I did do a, an unofficial poll on, on, on social media, and I asked residents in town, what roads do you feel are the most important? And, and a lot of people said you should just, why don't you start on the major roads that are most heavily traveled? Um, and, and work your way from there. I also would say that if there are roads that are more important, that you feel are more important than this, then that's fine. Now, this is just a recommendation for next year. We have plenty of time between now and next year to decide if these are the roads, but these are the roads that the Subcommittee recommended. Thank you.
So, may I follow up, Mr. Chair? Thank you. I, I do know, like everybody says, we got Southwest, Main, Prospect, Marsh, Brentwood. We also have the four or five roads that are on this tip project that are coming up as well. Um, my concern is, is an informal poll on social media. So I, I don't know where that lies in an open meeting law, but I'm not really sure if that's even a- allowed to happen. And though residents have talked to me about roads multiple times, I have no problem having that conversation. It, it's right there in our faces every single day. Um, but when I watched that recording, He- Heather, uh, a- and the town manager did give recommendations on that they would like to take a look at some of these roads before they, and, and come up with an actual cost evaluation, maybe an evaluation on the physical aspect of the roads, and to give a better prospect to, to the town council as a whole. Um, I'm just maybe, I'm trying to figure out why that just didn't happen instead of, uh, coming to the town council, we're having a huge discussion on this at this point.
Thank you. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, when we asked to have those road priority, we did not ask to have, just have them done right away. We discussed it to be studied, the sewer, the pipe, obviously, we don't want to, uh, temporary fix, we want it to be correct. So, but we recommend to be, look at them first. Regarding the budget, we recommend to, if we can, because I live in town twenty-two years, and we're still hearing the same thing. Tomorrow, we're gonna study, we're gonna, uh, see where we're gonna get money, we'll, and we'll never get anything done. So if we don't push and we look from where we're gonna get money, or the study, we can study those road now, and we can study the other one next year. Regarding the fund, I asked, we have some emergency money. We can borrow the money and pay it back, and when we pay it back, we can borrow again. It's, 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 we don't have the money, so we don't pave the road, we keep adding the sewer, the water, the tax on the residents, and we're not giving them anything back. I think by recommending this road doesn't mean they're special on any other residence. We want to fix all of them, but we trying to look for the main one, people use it most. And we can't just keep, uh, talking about it. We've been talking about it for a long time, like how I say, we don't have money, we don't have money. So, I understand your plan. I respect what you're doing, and it's good. One year, you put a hundred thousand, second year, you put two hundred thousand, the third year, you put three hundred thousand. It's awesome, but how long it's gonna take us to fix those road the way we're going? And I think the plan, I'm thinking, if we can do it, like loan from our emergency money. Because today, you're on the council, or me, and we can try to say, next election, we might not be in there, so who's gonna come after? Might the money we save not use it for the road, use it for somebody else. Like this, we'll make sure, we give them something to continue. You have a loan, you gotta pay it. This is road was paved, ten road, fifteen road. If they continue doing the same thing, I think the whole town will be paved and everybody will be happy. I'm not asking tomorrow, go ahead and, and put a pave on top of the old one. No. It doesn't need to study for the sewer, for the pipe, for the, uh, fire, fire hydrant. I agree with you, but we can't wait too long anymore. I think we'll wait for a long time. Uh, we have to move quick on it. This is why we're a road right now, like how I say, doesn't mean we want to patch them, we want them to be studied, we want to look what we need exactly, but we need those road to be more important from other. Other road is important too, but if we're gonna keep taking small money and put it on different road because it doesn't cost too much. So we fixing the small road, it's not really important as the the main road we recommend. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, Counsel Catrona first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, just a quick question. The pavement plan, does it address any of specific roads as a priority? Um, i- if, if so, do we have a plan? To go back. I know the original study that was, that was created back in twenty-twelve stated that it would cost, I don't quote me on numbers, but it was twenty million dollars to repair the roads in town. W- we all agree that, that we, that the roads need to be repaired. However, what is the, what did the studies state are, are roads that are of priority and should be done first? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Catrona. Counsel Catrona, I, I just, uh, before I go back to Counsel Adams, um, I just want to state for the record, um, we, as a council, had, uh, the former, uh, town manager had gone out and done a compact grant to do a pavement management study. Um, as a council, um, we approved that grant, receipt of that grant in November of two thousand and eighteen. We then gave guidance and a goal and objective that we would be given a list of priority roads based on that pavement management study and a presentation to council. Everybody, counselors, remember the former council, seated council remembers in January of two thousand and nineteen, on January twelfth, as a matter of fact, we were given the fact that that was when the contractor actually do the study was brought before council on January twelfth, that all the, the list of priority roads was due on January fifteenth. That goal of analysis, it was analysis of the pavement management study and presentation to the council. It's all well and good that Counsel Marquetti had a discussion at the, uh, Subcommittee prior to the new town manager being seated, a review of the pavement management study. I would like the new town manager to take a look at that pavement and study, take a look at the recommendations of the DPW Subcommittee, and come back to the council with perhaps, uh, either through DPW again to say, hey, we've taken a look at that pavement management study. We have some preliminary cost, and these are some priorities. I do take some umbrage at a comment that, uh, I've supported other projects, so you should support mine. I totally, this council and council, for two years, we've been screaming about roads, and that's why we went to the town manager to come up with a plan for roads, building money within the operating budget to make sure we had some monies for roads. We had a, a plan for roads, and then we went out and looked at the tip project, so we have a whole bunch of projects sitting out there for roads, millions of dollars of work in roads that are coming up. I just think it's, uh, it's well and good to say, hey, these are the roads that are the priority from the DPW Subcommittee. Now let's give some task to our new Give some task to our new town manager that's been here for three weeks and say, I want you to take a look at the roads that we've uh that DPW has recommended. And this council could say, and then come back and analyze that pavement management study and look at total projects. Worcester Street is being dug up for gas lines right now. You're not gonna be able to touch that road for at least a year by the time things settle and all that and whether those projects are done. We were very smart, I think, and I believe as a council. That when we went to get CDBG money. Uh, through the efforts of our DPW director, her recommendation to council was, hey, let's take a look at not only. Um, the uh street on Main Street, but what about the water lines? What about the connections? Okay, so if we throw Worcester Street out there and say, hey, Worcester Street, we're gonna redo Worcester Street and just do a pavement project and maybe spend a million dollars. For the whole length of of Worcester Street, but don't have an analysis of water lines, how old those water lines are and everything else. Um, then we're gonna, he's gonna come back and we'll we'll send, spend a million dollars. I'm all for repairing roads, but we have to, as a council, come up with a strategic plan. As to how best to attack the road issue. And uh I understand that it's, we keep talking about it, but me personally, I won't support this this evening. Because I haven't been given the uh a full review of the pavement management study. To Council Controller's point, uh, we haven't really had a discussion as a full council on that pavement management study and how it. Fits overall in our strategy for the town. So that's my uh point of view on this. Council Steve?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first off, to enter, or I think, I'm sorry, whoever asked the question, I think it was Council Controller a little while ago. Several of those items, several of the streets that we've listed are on the first page of. The pavement management plans, cost benefit and value analysis list. Seven pages long. Um, I don't entirely agree with some of the things that are listed in here as cost benefit and value analysis. Cause some of them seem to be kind of like they're really short streets like Gardner Street, which has like houses, five houses on it. I mean, that's something against people who live on Gardner Street, but people don't use it as a whole. Um, but my point with that is that I think this list in general is. At the way I see it, when we were having discussion for DPW, it's not about saying that we're just, it's just about paving it. It is that we wanted, that we want to have these lists be the ones that are, the ones that come forward after the current projects are done. To say, okay, these should be the priorities because of the major roads in town that a lot of people use for various reasons and. That would inc, to me, that would include taking a look at any necessary infrastructure under the roads and those kinds of things that might need to be done. Because I completely agree that we need to be doing them right. Cause otherwise, it ends up being far more costly in the long run to do any of this work. If we don't take into account water and sewer lines and so forth. And I I would agree with you, Council Governor, Council, uh, Mr. Chairman, that about the issue with Worcester Street and. What they're doing now with the national, with National Grid and the and the gas lines and it's already a mess now. That was one of the reasons why it came up, because it's already settling in weird ways and it's uneven and. And uh, so I can understand why it might be, that'll certainly be an issue going forward. Um, but as far as this, so that was, that was my thought was this, and then I. And I know it's the next item, but when it comes to 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 funding these issues. I think that it's, I would totally agree that we do need to take a look at how we would fund it, how we would go about doing it. Um, what, whether or not, cause I that, right? I don't know if you can, if you'd allow me to talk, talk on that issue since it is related, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead. They are related because we did raise, how do we pay for this?
Exactly. So, um, cause that was one of the things that that I was concerned about too, is that we would need to take a look at. If if we are bonding for or how we're, how we're going to fund these particular projects and any other projects going down the road, literally down the road going forward. Um, on, and so I think in these kinds of things where are, we need to look at whether or not we can actually do them. Under our current um levy capacity and therefore don't need to go to a ballot. Or whether we need to go to the ballot because we have to do either a um, an override or a debt exclusion. And I know that the next item specifically mentions uh two and a half override, but the two do need to be considered because they're distinctly different. As for those of you who are relatively new, debt exclusions are temporary, overrides are permanent. And you can set a debt exclusion for five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, however long you think you need it to be. Um, and if we're gonna do something that's really big picture. Um, I do think the idea, and I've mentioned this a couple of times, at at least at DPW, maybe up here. Um, that I think we might wanna consider something similar to what Oxford did, whereas they actually tried to. Put a ballot question together that would look at all of the roads over the course of three, five-year cycles of five million dollars. And their plan unfortunately was butchered at the ballot, which is not a surprise. But their plan was to visit all of the roads over the course of these fifteen years, five million dollars a whack. At a a cycle and then. Um, by then they would have hit every, every road in town and including a lot of the weird back roads that have been needing work for decades and. We're in the same boat with a lot of our backwards too. So this one, I think if we did something like that, it would give us a chance to address. Some of these little side streets, the Fairmont Avenues and the Gardner Streets and the Grace Lanes and the Page Hill Roads. That otherwise would not generally speaking be largely considered high priority. For for usually because they don't have that many people on them, but they're obviously priority to whoever lives on them. So that was, that's one of the concerns that I have in doing going forward is that. I I think that the major roads probably should be the priority roads, otherwise I wouldn't have supported the uh the item at DPW. But I do think that we need to make sure we do this right and it's not going to necessarily be an easy task. Um, either from promoting it to the public or internally exactly figuring out. With the town manager McCall and Karen and and how there and other people figure out exactly how we're going to fund it.
Uh, you also, Council Steve? Council Dan?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I I'll recognize you at the end, Mr. Smith, if you have something to say. Also, Dan? John Worsman. Okay. Also, Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, we we, when we recommend those road, we we recommend the whole study. I I agree with you, uh, Mr. Chair regarding uh the sewer, the water, all this. The reason why we pick up those road, this is when you come in town, this is the main road, it's it's. First thing you drive in town, people gotta look at your town. If it's, if it's uh respectable, clean, uh, the road is nice. Those inside road, it's important too, but the reason why we recommend mechanic Worcester Street. Worcester Street, the state highway go through, I think we'll probably be able to get uh chapter ninety. Uh, River Street is a big company. Why I recommend the River Street? Because it's a big company there. It's a lot, a lot of people drive there to go to work. Uh, I'm not looking on the small street and I'm not looking on, again, to pass those road. I want them to done right. So we recommend him first to be studied and considered as a, as a first priority to be working on. That doesn't mean is we want him to have done quick. So it it could be take a year, two years, but we recommend it to be the first. And money wise, again, I understand the plan you guys put together. It it's good, it's important, but it's gonna take forever. Like two, three years you guys working on it, couple hundred thousand he was able to save, but the rest, the rest was chapter ninety's money, not all the money you put guys from. I recommend too, to be able to borrow money from the emergency. Two million dollars, fix some of the road, whatever the budget will fit, two million dollars, and we will pay it back. We do another two road. Because the way we saving money, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand a year, we're not gonna save to fix any road. And ten year from now, you're gonna fix three, four road. I think it's important to look for somewhere to get more money from ourselves saving it. We have money before, income before from different places. I I'm not gonna name it. And we have nothing, we have zero. I think the resident deserve to enjoy some of the road before the. The elderly pass away, but the money tax they pay already. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna reiterate that we got, the roads need to be done and they need to be done as fast as we possibly can. But we gotta be financially sound at the same time. If we're gonna talk about this, I'm not gonna even talk about this all right till we get to the the agenda nineteen. But I will say to sit there and say that now the roads have been done and all we've been doing is talking about it, then. We can name off all these streets that are being done and that are already in the works. Again, this is a process that has to take place. For us to do certain things within this town, make sure we do not break the bank, whatever we do. And another thing is, uh, just to reiterate, there was a road study done this year, twenty twenty. If you don't know this by now. Then we we've been talking about this since we approved them to write the grant. There is a study out there. Take a look at the study. I'm not gonna agree with every major road or minor repair or preventive maintenance. I got that. There is a process in place that we're working and if it has to take chapter ninety money, our own money, CDBG money, complete streets money and all these other. Funds that could possibly help us out a little bit, then I say we do it. But to sit, to sit there and say we're minimizing ourselves just by putting a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars away is really not the truth. So I uh, again, I'm not gonna recommend, I I'm not gonna vote for this at all. I I do recommend that we do some type of. Uh, look at our our rec, some of these recommendations and send it back to the town manager and. And Heather for for evaluation, then get back with us through subcommittee or or to the town council. I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Hey, Council Mike?
Oh yeah, I'd just like to point out that this is just a recommendation on priorities. Uh, the uh. This was based on the this year's pavement management study. I realize that we can't do all the roads. We we broke it down into. We broke it down into priority roads and we um. We asked that the town council adopted it. Certainly if there's some roads like I I said at the subcommittee level. If there's roads such as Worcester Street that is still being worked on, then take it off the list. But they've got plenty of time between now and next year to study it. This is just a recommendation. To consider these roads as a priority and uh. I didn't mean to infer, uh, Mr. Chairman, that uh you owed me anything. I didn't mean that. So I'd like to take that back. I just mean that we all have our priorities. Uh, we all run on certain things and this is what I ran on. I want the roads fixed. Residents want the roads fixed. As far as going as a, on. An informal poll on Facebook, I don't see any difference between that and talking to somebody in a, in a restaurant somewhere or anything else. In fact, nowadays. You have to do it that way because the only way you can communicate with residents. So I see no difference between doing that on social media or meeting in person with people. Um, and it was, by the way, it was just informal. I. I know there's probably a lot of people on there voting, may not even live here, but I think I got a general understanding. People want the roads fixed. They want the major roads fixed. And so this was just our recommendation. This is just. This is just a priority list. This has nothing to do with the funding. That's the next step. But right now, this is just a priority list. That uh we asked the town council to support. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Town Manager, did you have a question?
Yes, sir. I'll save some of my comments for the next article, but I just wanna remind people not to lose sight of the unprecedented situation we're going through right now with COVID nineteen. And there's, that's something that runs through the back of my mind, that I don't think we're out of the woods yet on fiscal year twenty-one. Um, you know, I watch the news reports coming out of Beacon Hill daily. The cold weather is coming back. That could impact the restaurants, you know, if we're not moving through the. The the appropriate steps and phases and we don't um loosen the restrictions on some of the the ways that we generate local receipts. Moreover, if we have a resurgence, that will impact the the receipts that we have for the balance of the year. It will similarly have a huge impact in the state. And what they're gonna provide for local aid going forward into fiscal um twenty-two. So if we have a problem. Um, be it a shortfall towards the end of this fiscal year or they cut our aid going into fiscal twenty-two. We're gonna rely upon those emergency funds that have been put aside in the past. In an effort to help get us through some of that. I'm not saying you'd use them all, but I mean, you may have to need them. So if you're starting to think about using them for other things, I I would just caution council members to remember that, you know. Although life has started to return back to normal, we don't know what will happen once the colder weather hits. And what's gonna happen when they start closing their books. I mean, we should be getting the um. Closing out this quarter shortly and then we'll be able to see what what impacts some of the loser. Of the restrictions on the restaurants is done to the hotel and meals tax that that comes into the town and that may help us project a little bit better. But again. Um, if things take a a turn in the next quarter or the quarter after that. Have an impact on what we're, we're able to do and it's gonna change our priorities accordingly.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Council Ryan, I do hear you. I'll put, I'll put you on the list, Council Ryan. I do hear you now. Okay?
Okay.
Uh, I think next, I I think I had Mr. Smith next. I do see you, Council Steve. Mr. Smith?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I don't know if you can, this is the first time I've ever done this. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, you're you're good. Just reminded you, three minutes.
Okay, uh, valid points that all the previous speakers brought up. Now, the thing that I would like to know, in this latest pavement study report. That the state paid for, did it list any priorities of roads to be addressed? Now, and I'm gonna, I'll I'll just continue that on. Now, I think Heather will agree. That there are roads that are going to require deep reconstruction. There are other roads that are gonna be just grind and pave. And then I don't even know if it's under consideration on maybe on some of the outside, outlying roads. That we might consider kind of the old penetrating oil and sand. Um, those are things that should be broken down into categories. So and then once they're broken down in categories. Uh, you can establish a priority and then. Everybody intelligently can start speaking about the cost and then where we go from there. So my big question still is, did the study address any of these issues? And if it didn't, then we should. Uh, and has the road study plan, has that been made public yet? And that's basically all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, thank you. Um. I'm not sure if it's up on the website. We'll double check on that. Um, we'll get it public. But uh, I do believe that study does have the list of priorities and all that. So uh, if not, uh, I think we can get you a copy of it. I do see the counselors and I do have a list, so I do see your hands. I have next on the list, Council Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna partially answer uh David Smith's question. Um, the the current report, the report, um. A is, they was not on the website as of the last time I looked. Um, the twenty twelve one is. Um, and the way it sets it up is it, it has a, as I mentioned earlier, it has a cost benefit and now value analysis list of each road in various orders and. How they, that their numbers coming up is, are, I don't really understand the way they do the cost benefit and analysis, but that's one way of ranking them. Um, and it also, it also breaks them down um by condition. And uh, so that those kind of, I guess you could say, we could set it up. The what, what our priorities would be are kind of based on a combination of both of those. Um, and that would be, I would think, they they do not specifically state. And they they just specifically come out and say, you should do X, Y, and Z roads in this order. Um, and that, I don't, and I honestly don't know if they would be able to do that, given the the limits of funding and those kinds of things. It's an issue of that there's so many other issues involved with roads. And looking at the pavement condition and as, as our DPW director has mentioned in the past, some of these roads have infrastructure, some of them don't. There's all kinds of other issues around that you literally cannot see because they're underground. So those would tie into all some of these, whether or not they would be priority or not. Um, and that's kind of what I was talking about earlier about needing to take a look at some of these. Some of these major streets that I think still should be priorities, but whether, when we do them and how we do them will depend on. Literally what's underground in many respects. Um, and the other, uh, what was the other issue I had? I had another thing that I wanted to bring up and I'm drawing a blank on it now. I hate when I do that. Um. If I remember what it is, I'll be, I'll come back to you.
Thank you. Council Daniel, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Ms. Blakely. Um, I think it's about time we hear from you. And in terms of you being the supervisor of the roads, um. I'd like your feelings about the list of roads, uh, whether you think it's doable or not, whether you think there are other roads that would be a higher priority and what reasons you have for that. Um, so I'd just like your comments about what we've been talking about tonight.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chairman. I I figured you could go ahead and answer. Um. I I agree that these are a lot of major roads, some of them. I I believe that these are a lot of long aging roads. Some of them are very high. I have an analysis presented in the APW.
I can't understand her.
Heather, we can't understand you. Your microphone's not.
All right, I'm going to try to stay closer and see if that helps.
No, it's it's very gobbled. Uh, let's see if you can get it repaired. I'll I'll come back to, uh, I'll come back to you, Heather, on that answer response. Okay? I don't know if you can call in maybe on your phone. Um, Council Ryan, I'll go to you first. Now we'll go back to DPW Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I'm not going to talk about the funding, because that's the next agenda item. I have my own questions about that. Um, but the way I look at this one is I see council setting a list of roads as a priority to be repaired. I think that counts as priority. I I prerogative. I I think this is something we should do. These are roads that are consistently used, um, constantly beaten up on, are in dire need of repair. And I don't see an issue with council as a whole setting a priority thing. These are the roads we would like to see addressed. Um, obviously, we're going to need more plans. We're going to need more information when it comes down to doing individual repairs on these roads and cost benefit analysis. But I think as a council setting a priority list of roads that need to be focused on, at least as a council, I I I think it's perfectly appropriate, and I intend to support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, DPW Director Blakely?
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Hold on a second. Okay. Um, so I I haven't had a chance to go through every road that is on this list and study it and look at it where it was compared to the pavement management study. I know from looking at the, during the DPW Subcommittee meeting, I did look at the cost benefit analysis, and some of these roads are on there and they're very high up. I would caution that, you know, we have the TIP project that is ongoing, that is going to touch a part of Hamilton Street. Um, that includes changing water lines and and addressing sewer issues of parts of Hamilton Street up to where the new rotary is going. I know it's not all of Hamilton Street, but we we need to look at sometimes these projects in segments. Um, so, you know, some of these roads are already in the list. Um, we can look with some other funding sources, and I think giving some priorities so that we can prioritize the funding sources of, you know, maybe CDBG fund for upcoming CDBG funds would be helpful for either Hamilton or Crane and River, um, to do parts of that because it is in the CDBG area. So there are different options that we can do. Um, what I would really like to do is to go ahead and oh, look at the overview of these roads. I don't think all of Mechanic Street needs to be repaved. If you look at the pavement management study, there are portions of it that need to probably be done and portions of it that don't. And like Mr. Schmick said, it probably only requires a, um, a mill and overlay versus a full-depth reconstruction, which is a lot more cost-effective. So I would really like to be able to look at these road individually. I also think that as a council and as a DPW Director, we have been talking about other roads in the past, including Gulfwood, that we still do need to either make a very conscious decision to tell the residents that we are going to table those roads and in favor of these. Um, but I think that we need to make sure that what we, that we know that going forward. Um, I I think if it were me, I would be taking whatever funding we think we could get and looking at it from a cost benefit analysis standpoint. If we need to make adjustments to the cost benefit analysis because we think, okay, maybe you're putting too high of a degree on some dead-end roads that don't have as many residents, those adjustments can be made in that, in that algorithm that is used in the program. But just to start picking and choosing roads, you're making a very narrow approach, which is one way of looking at it. Giving, doing the roads that have the highest impact or have the highest resident, uh, people driving on them, but there are also some of the most expensive roads to do, um, because of that. So I will take this view, this list of roads and go ahead and start compiling the information on every stick with one of them. Um, again, not all of Worcester Street is under our control. Some of it is state road, but most of the state road area is done. National Grid is still doing the work out there and, um, I don't, I haven't got an update. I have asked for an update on the progress of that project, but my understanding is they're still going to need to do laterals, which will delay and complicate that project even longer. So there are a lot of moving aparts with these roads. Like water, sewage, and drainage, which is another big thing that we do not have a funding source to address other than whatever we do put in for money ourselves. So water, sewer, drainage, and making sure that National Grid has addressed any problems in these roads before we touch them, so they're not ripping them up within the next five years. Um, we really want them to address any issues they have on their, on those roads before we touch them. I hope that answered your question.
Councilor Katrona, you're next.
Go ahead, Council Katrona. I think he called on you next.
Yes, Council Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you, Heather. It was a very good update. Much appreciated. I I think by all counselors, great conversation. Personally, I I I'd like to see this go back to the town manager to review the study, work closely with the DPW Director, and then come back to council, either council as a whole, come back to subcommittee with, uh, recommendations and and a full display of of where we go from here with the review of that study. Um, it's important that we get this right, I think, the first time. And as we have a new town manager, I think it's important for him to, um, go over this with our DPW Director. And for that reason, I I cannot support this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other counselors that are still there that I did not call? Counsel Steve, did you have anything?
Um, one thing I wanted to bring up is, uh, one of the questions I had that I forgot about a few minutes ago is how much do we currently have in stabilization?
Ms. Townman? I know Karen's on as well, if you want. Refer to Karen.
Yeah, I I may have to because I I've been looking at, but I don't have the exact dollar figure off the top of my head. I did not bring that with me.
All right, okay, thank you. Karen, Finance Director, I know you're on.
Yes, I I don't know the exact amount, but I'm going to say it's approximately about four million dollars.
Okay, um, thank you. And the other thing I just wanted to clarify earlier about uh, either Counselor Adams or Counselor Dow mentioned, or both of you kind of, um, just to clarify, I think she, Counselor Dow. Um, this is, the stabilization is is our savings account. It's our, it's our emergency fund. Um, and I don't, I don't think there's any policy, there's any real practice where whereby we borrow from it. It's it's what we have in it, and if it's 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 gets expended, we're, we don't have it anymore. And so it's up to what we put back into it over the course of time. Um, and the funding that we've done over the last several years, more, I guess, more for you and for the, for people who are watching, um, is that that it's not a matter of trying to do as as little as we can and minimize it. Um, kind of to what Dave, to Counselor Adams' point earlier, it's it's we're try, we've been trying to put extra funds into it to augment what we get from chapter ninety, which isn't anywhere near enough to do any of the stuff that we want to do. That's why we're trying to get some of these roads done that take forever, things like South Street and and so and West Street and so forth, that are finally getting something done that we've wanted to see get done for a really long time. Um, and as, and also to mention that, yeah, I think Heather mentioned Gulfwood. And I think I, that was actually one of the ones that I was under the impression was already in process in some way. So I was seeing that as being one, one that would be one of the ones that's already being done and that the one, that the list that we're creating right now, uh, was kind of, kind of assumed that that was getting done too. Um, also, I thought, I thought might be a bad idea if we, if we wanted to add a priority road, um, would be a part of Pleasant Street, at least up to River Street. Since that gets a fair amount of traffic and we saw a lot of issues, um, with a whole bunch of trucks being rerouted up that way when they were doing the bridge project on one thirty-one. Um, there was just a few extra thoughts that I had. Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Sharon.
Thank you. Council Adams?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I tell you. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I know that our our money, but if we make a plan not to spend them, like I told early, uh, maybe now we're on a council and we directing those money or the plan, uh, Counselor Adam and other council already have, anybody can come in the future and change it. The whole idea is to give them something, they can keep it, they can change in it. I don't know if you guys understand what I'm trying to say regarding borrow our own money, and we can make a commitment to pay back because tomorrow, maybe somebody else come and say, well, I don't want to, uh, do the road. I want to buy a new, uh, equipment or something or 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 anything. It it's, you know, the the residents waiting for some road to be done for a long time. And now we keep uh, ask for more money for tax, for for houses, for water, for sure, and we need to ask, but we have to give something back to the resident. And I understand we don't have the budget. I understand we're short on money. I understand this is a lot of study, and I'm not against that. I'm 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 with you to study the road, what we need to have it done correctly. But the reason why I mentioned borrow money to move more faster and guarantee that next council is going to come, we'll give them something they have to maintain and keep it to win. Ob- obviously, the whatever we did, they've done, and then they can do the new idea they have. But twenty-two years in town, I don't see much of change. I understand now the new council, they work hard, they have think already in the process. The whole idea to have some more thing faster and those road we recommend, we're not saying this is the final road. We just recommend to be first to look at it. Uh, doesn't mean we want all of it to be done tomorrow or 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 next item, but it's important, uh, like I understand Worcester Street have more work to be done on. I agree with you. Uh, so don't hold like a small road on us. We just recommend those as a, as a priority because we look at the people driving on and using them the most, but you don't have to do them all. Uh, and technically, all the road need to be done, but again, those the main thing people want to come in town and leave the town, they use them. And I understand your concern. We don't have the money. It needs to be studied. We we agree with you. We we are on that. We're not changing anything. So regarding if you're going to study those road or different road, you still have to study. So we we recommend those to be first study because it's important. Uh, why I always, like, you probably sick of me right now, I go back to River Street. It's important because Ducks Russell hired a lot of, uh, employee. They open another, uh, apart and service. I don't think they want to drive anybody down there on that road to show them their company. They're probably embarrassed. I'm sorry to say that, you know, for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Um, anybody else? So I I just, as a follow-up, I I think, I it's a great discussion about roads, and I think uh, we have been talking about roads for a long time and looking at a plan and and we look at the overall strategy. I I just, uh, I I think, uh, my point earlier was that I have no problem giving a list of these roads, but I really would like to counsel Katrona's point. Point, we have a new town manager and to have, uh, him look at these with the DPW Director and report back because to Counsel Steve's, I just heard him throw out three more streets that should probably be added to this list. And I could sit here and go, there's a bunch of other roads to listen. I'm not talking about a six-month study. I'm saying our town manager has been here three weeks. We, it is our job to give direction, and we are given some kind of, we are given directions to say, hey, this is a council, a group of the council is is agreeing that this should be the overall strategy. And then for him to come back to us along with that funding piece as well. I'm not going to talk about, I have my own thoughts on that. The override vote, but it's all intertwined, and I'm not saying you study it and wait. I'm just saying, let's give our new town manager at least thirty days to just si- sit here and look at that pavement management study, the roads that we're providing, and come up with a comprehensive strategy to present to council that, yes, those are the roads. So I'm not saying to delay, and I nothing against what the DPW did. I just would like to give our new town manager some, uh, ability to look at those roads and the study um, that, uh, was paid for and and come up with a strategic plan to the town that also encompasses all those other projects that we have. So that when we go to the town, because let me tell you, if we want to put together an override um, to the town, uh, those are very difficult to do. Uh, and you, we should have, um, a very detailed analysis of these are roads that are being done on this grant, this, uh, a grant, South Street is on a water line, all those things, and put it together and and say, this is our plan, whether it's a two-to-three-year immediate plan and a long-range plan, but let's give our new manager some some ability to look at that and present it back to us within thirty days. Um, that's my only thought. I I I don't have any dispute with a lot of the roads on this, on the list. Um, but I do know, given my twenty, thirty years of experience in public sector, the minute we put that list and say it's a priority road, the council of Dow say, well, other things that the DPW Director could come to us and say, well, I really need to do this street. Well, no, no, council told you, you're going to do Crane Street, and it better be done before anything else. So I I we're wanting to make sure that we have a a str- strategic analysis of what's going on. Counselor Mike Caddy?
Uh, Counsel Joe Van, if you, if you would like to, if it's okay if we amend this, that we set this priority list to give to the town manager to study, that's all. Like I said before, this is just a list, a priority list that we think road should be done, should be next on the list anyway. But if you'd like to amend this, then we would like to consider um, giving this priority list to the town manager and the DPW Director to study. I have no problem with that. We're not forcing anyone to do anything. We're just asking them to make these a priority, that's all. And if there's some roads on there, they say, hey, uh, we don't think this should be done. Okay, that's fine. We'll take a look at that. I would say, okay with you. Let's just amend this then, and ask that we present this priority list to the town manager and the DPW Director to study. That's all. I just like, like I said before, it seems like it's, the town council never has any say on anything. It's always you just voting on what the town officials want us to vote on, and and we never seem to have any say on it. And I think we, we do have a we do have a right to decide what roads we want fixed. Again, we're not, I'm not forcing it on them. I'm just asking that we give them this list. So it's okay with you. Let's, why don't we just make an amendment then, that we will give this to the, pardon?
Go, go ahead with your amendment first, and then Counsel Steve was second.
All right, uh, vote that the full council consider.
What is your amendment? Just whatever your amendment is.
Well, we just want to give this list, this priority list, to the town manager and the DPW Director to study. That's all.
So vote to, vote to the full council refer to the town manager, the following list of priority roads? And present to the council on it, an analysis
Right.
of that in conjunction with the pavement management study?
That sounds good. That sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so let me, so Mary has it correctly. Uh, the amendment would be vote that the full council refer the following priority roads that need to be repaired and paved in Southbridge, Dresser Street, Dennison Drive, Worcester Street, Hamilton Street, River Street, Mechanic Street, and Crane Street. And I think Sale Street was was in Sale Street, uh, to be studied in conjunction with the pavement management study and to report back to the town council. Mr. Town Manager, if we give a date, what what what's a day, a good date for that? Thirty days, sixty days? I mean, so that is, what's that?
Well, I was also going to ask, um, DPW Director, Heather Blakely, to weigh in as well. Um, you know, I I can get together with, uh, our finance director, our assessor, and put together. It it's, it it has to tie in with whatever we're going to do on the next, um, um, agenda item as well, Mr. Chairman. But but I would defer to Heather Blakely just about how much time it's going to take to have an analysis. Uh, I forgot to mention my announcements. I did hear back from National Grid relative to our letter and and they wanna set up a meeting with me, um, DPW Director and I think the the chief, the respective chiefs. And so that may be an opportunity to get, you know, some information from National Grid relative to their long-range plans about utilities. Um, so it it could take some time to coordinate some meetings like that or get some of that data back from from National Grid. So uh, you know, the thirty days might be uh, too short a turnaround time. That's why I wanted to defer to to Heather. How long did, in her experience, it was gonna take to get an analysis of some of those roads and to speak to the utilities and to look at the water and the sewer?
Heather?
Yeah, I, I think it could take us at least sixty days. I'm not even sure if we can get the sewer um, completely inspected within sixty days, but I can get a general sense from him what the conditions are and report back to you if we do not have a condition assessment on the sewer. I can give you age of water and make some determinations that way. Um, we can look at what we have for drainage information and give you an overall rating there and how much we think it's gonna cost.
All right, so we'll do sixty days and then at that mark, if we need a little additional time, well, at least we'll have uh, some kind of report back. So sixty days. Um, so that's a s- a motion and a second, so we got time, sixty days. Mary, do you have that complete? I just wanna make sure you're all set on that.
Uh, I'm pretty sure I have it, but I'll review the video just to make sure I I got the wording right if you want.
All right, so a motion and a second. Now this is discussion on the amendment. You have something to the amendment there, Council Dow? I saw your hand raised.
Uh, thank you for share. It's pretty much the same. They're gonna review and they're gonna study to see what we need uh, for that road. So the time you're giving them to get back to us, like, pretty much what we're asking. They're gonna study the first those roads and see what we need to be done. So I'm not sure what, I mean, it's kinda almost pretty much what we're asking to be on the study, the first priority. And then that's what they gotta do and get back to us. So uh, we're not first or be working on. We just recommend them to be the first priority and study and we can after that decide what's more more important to be done from other. So I don't know if sixty days is enough for them to study the sewer, the water, the electric, all these things that need to be done. And and actually, that's what we're asking for and
Yeah, so I I think the intent, I appreciate your comment. I think the intent of this though also ties into other concerns about the pavement management study. So we're tying both together to say that um, these are the list of priority roads that Council DPW had. We have the pavement management study. Now we refer back to the town manager and the DPW director to really take a look at that overall encompassing as well as the other projects that we have that they can report back to the council. That would be my intent.
That's fine with me. Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on the amendment? Roll call on the amendment.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Joe Van?
Yes.
Council Mark Caddy?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yeah.
And Council Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the agenda item as amended? See, non-roll call?
Council Katona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Joe Van?
Yes.
Council Mark Caddy?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yeah.
Council Steve's?
Yes.
And Council Adams?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate all the dialogue that we had on that. It is an important topic. Um, and I think it took us a while to get to a a a good place uh, for further uh, for further work. Um, so moving on to the next one, cause I think this will tie in. Um, vote that the full council consider instructing town manager apply for capital improvement bond for priority road improvements. If needed, that a two-and-a-half override vote be placed on next year's town ballot to pay for the capital improvement bond. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
I get it.
Okay, discussion.
Well, I'd like to start off, you know, mine.
Well, he can
Oh, this is voted uh, three to nothing uh, favorable, although I will say, I think uh, Council Steve's voted to, just so we could have a discussion. Um, I will say that um, first of all, I met with the town manager the day before we go, had our meeting. And Mr. Town Manager, I'm not throwing you under the bus. I actually thought you had some wise uh, advice for me. I I said, why would this have to go on the ballot anyway? And you said, no, how are you gonna pay for it? So I thought, you know, a lot of people are gonna ask that, how are we gonna pay for it? So I suggested that we apply for a capital improvement bond for priority road improvements. Now, I did receive the email from Council Steve's that we never talked about the two-and-a-half override. Um, I listened to the recording. I I said the two-and-a-half override. I I think I mentioned it four times. That this should go on the ballot. However, um, as you see in the uh, motion here, I said if needed, if not needed, if the town manager comes back to us and says, we don't, and uh, Karen says, we don't need to go override, then uh, God bless them, hallelujah. But I don't, I like to be upfront with people. I don't want people to think, oh, we can do this and you won't have to pay any more taxes. It could be. Hopefully, it won't be, but it it could be. And I like to be upfront with people that that's what could be. It it might have to go on the ballot. And as, and I said on here, if needed. Um, however, Council Steve's wants to make an amendment to remove that. I have no problem with that. I have no problem with any amendment on this. Actually, if you want this to be the same way as the last one, to go back to the town manager and Karen Harnoyes to study, that's fine with me. I'm just trying to be upfront with people and tell them, you want the roads fixed, this is how I suggest we pay for it, a capital improvement bond. I happen to agree with Council Katona. I don't like using stabilization money for things like this because um, like I said before, um, you use stabilization money, it's money that was put in there by older taxpayers and uh, like me and and I'm not the only one that's gonna be driving on these roads. Future taxpayers are also gonna be driving on these roads. And I, I think it's only fair that with a capital improvement bond, they would, they would also be paying for these road improvements. Um, so that's all I have to say. Like I said, Council Steve's, if you wanna amend it, that's fine with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna make it clear that I wasn't, I wasn't objecting to the idea that it may indeed have to go to the ballot, cause it might. Um, as I said earlier, it's an issue where we really need to determine whether we have enough funding or if we have enough levy capacity to do it with or without the ballot. And if we, if we do it, then even then, we may want to, as a council, to seriously debate it and send it to the ballot anyway, even if we do have the level of capacity. Cause that's the kind of, cause this is a major project that really probably deserves having the citizens buy into it in one way or another. If we get a clarification of if they're willing to fund it, that kind, that kind of, that level of work. Cause it's, it's a big nut. Um, but that that was, that was the, that was the only concern that I had with the way that was phrased because of the fact that, as I mentioned earlier, two-and-a-half and two-and-a-half overrides and debt exclusions are not the same thing. And one, one doing one, doing it one way and doing it the other way, they're, they're similar, but they're not quite the same. And I think that that that's where Karen and the town manager would come into play of trying to determine how would be this to do it. Um, I'm, when it comes to major projects like this, I'm certainly agree, uh, inclined to agree with what you said, Council Mark Caddy, and what the Council Katona mentioned about huge sums of money coming out of stabilization is probably not the best way to fund them. You know, these kinds of things generally, you do generally go for some sort of um, a loan, which a debt exclusion or or an override essentially is a loan. Um, cause you would end up, you ended, you ended up bonding them at some, some level of funding to do it. I'm the only supposed benefit of going through stabilization, if we wanted to do it that way, is that we wouldn't end up having to pay the interest on the loan. Um, although I totally agree with your point, Town, Townsman Mark Caddy, about the um, the fact that this money is being paid into by, it was paid into by the current tax base as opposed to people from ten years from now. Um, but everybody's paying to the same, same tax base. And so that was, that was the only concern that I had with the way, the way this agenda item was phrased. I just think it needs to be a little bit, we need to, I think this actually ends up going to something similar to what we did with the last item, where I think it's a situation where we should amend it a little bit to li- to give the uh, the manager and the finance director a chance to look at this and figure out the best ways to fund it. Like it, based on the list that we just had in number eighteen, go through their process.
I'm not perfect. I'm just trying to get roads fixed.
While they were doing it anyway, the discussion we had already a few minutes ago, so.
Yeah, so um, Council Mark Caddy, thank, thank you for putting this on. Uh, I I personally, um, we do have a lot of projects, roads is number one priority. We have other needs we have, that we have to take a look at. Um, fire station, uh, we have uh, school roofs potentially that we have to take a look at. Um, and uh, so I I I personally don't have a problem with the town manager instructing the town manager uh, to to I I think the only problem I think I have with this way it's worded is instructing him to apply for a capital improvement bond. I I think I would uh, much prefer, because everything is contingent as e- estimated cost. So if we're estimating a cost of three to five million dollars for those initial uh, list of priority roads, um, I think uh, it's a bigger picture to allow the town manager to go back and and take a look at that of what the potential, and I'm sure he's prepared on some numbers tonight. Um, but if we're gonna go to any kind of bond type ran, first off, I I think uh, it's a further discussion about finances, number one is, and I know the fire chief had done a spreadsheet that had been sent out to uh, to the fire station building committee as to what debt uh, that was completed, I think by Melissa and, I think it was Melissa that uh, analyzed what projects were still, uh, you know, were paying for and what years they were coming off. So I I think that's where, uh, rather than say to apply for it, it would really be that I would wanna see the town manager and Karen uh, work together to to look at everything in conjunction and come back to us of of what some of our avenues are. We do know that we may have town-owned property that may be for sale or was for sale that we're waiting to close on. What potentially do we have there? Some other monies outside of stabilization, but it really takes a uh, detailed analysis by the town manager and the finance department to present that to us. So I think the only caveat that I have, I I do have difficulty in instructing him to apply for it. I would like to have him review that capital improvement bond and and present to us what the best strategy for the town would be. But I'll, I'll defer to, I guess, uh, town manager, Mr. Town Manager first.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I I'm, I'm fine with that. What I think also, we have to incorporate, as you said, these other needs in a long-term strategy of how we wanna tackle these things going forward. Um, and we can present, or it would be my preference to present options to the council and I'm happy to work with um, the finance director, the the assessor and the treasurer to put together some numbers as to what it would cost, how we would do it, whether it would be a debt exclusion or override or try and work with the existing capacity. Um, but I I I wanna look at also an overall strategy and how we're gonna tackle a lot of these things in the next five years. Cause there's gonna be a lot of things, as you've alluded to, uh, the curbside pickup. Uh, we're looking at, you know, what to do with the fire station, there'll be other capital needs and how how will factor those all in? So I would appreciate the time and the opportunity to look at that and work with the team that we have in-house, then come back and present to council some thoughts and options as how to pursue these goals.
Okay, thank you. Council Dow? You all set?
Perfect.
Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So I have discussed this before. I'm not really a big fan of of taking out of our emergency funds and trying to pay ourselves back. I I think that's just bad precedence and and we don't even even know what our receipts are gonna look like here very soon. And, you know, it's taken away from um, probability of saving our town down the road financially, because we worked really hard with the department heads and former town manager to make sure that we were stable during this pandemic uh, financially. Uh, I, I bring up, sir, I think uh, Council Steve's have brought up when it talks about the override. Um, and I could be wrong, cause I'm not a financial guru here, but the override being that we're permanently, permanently um, increasing our levy limit up two-point-five percent um, from here on out, unless the town, am I wrong on that one?
It's not two, it's not two-and-a-half percent. It's whatever you increase that dollar amount into the tax base. But it's not, it's above the two-and-a-half percent. Am I correct, uh, town manager?
Yes, it's, you would be permanently building that number into the tax base, whereas it was mentioned before, if it's a debt exclusion, you, if you go out to bond for ten, fifteen, twenty years, you you put it on, it's in the um, it's in the taxes for that amount of time and then it comes off, just like the debt schedule that was alluded to before um, that uh, Chief Norman had circulated. Um, we have certain things that are out to bond now that we're paying for and as those come off, uh, it frees up our ability to go back for additional bonding. But if you, if you put something in as an override, you know, I understand there may have been an override many years ago for trash here in this community. Um, that's built in uh, permanently. Um, but for something like this, a short-term capital project, you more likely, if you were gonna do this, go to the ballot, it would be for a debt exclusion.
Thank you, thank you. My only concern I have at this point is, I don't have a problem with the debt exclusion. Um, taking a look at that as well, but if we do the override, thank you for a clarification on that. The first year, we have to use that for that specific item, correct? Or am I wrong on that one? And then thereafter, it can be used for whatever.
Uh, what, what was that question?
So my question here is, my question here is on the override. That first year will be utilized for, let's just say it's three million dollars towards roads or whatever it is. But now the year after that, is it designated for roads from there on out or is it, or whatever it may be used for? It doesn't have to be for the roads.
That's a good question.
You know, I I I would have to research that, but I I think, you know, the spirit of tend, what you go to the ballot, you know, oftentimes is, you know, for the debt exclusion, you have a specific project, you're 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 spelling out how you're gonna do that over that time period. Um, but you're raising it for a specific amount to build in the taxes. I I think you would have problems if you were to take that money and use it elsewhere with the electorate, with the council. Um, but I can give you a specific answer in the entire council on what, what can be done unless Karen Harnoyes can answer or or add to that. But I I I don't know what can happen year two, three um, on a specific override question. I've never ever thought of that in the course of my career and I've only, my, the towns that I've worked for um, didn't really go for the override. There was one in my hometown many years ago and it was for a specific, it was for curbside collection and it's still built in and we still do curbside collection. So I don't think anybody ever thought of taking that money and using it elsewhere. But I will, I will research it.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. I think that's all the only concerns I have with this. I I I have no problem going back to town manager uh, and the finance side and and take a look at what the cost may be, uh, tax increases, uh, whatever may be. But then, uh, you know, I'll be the problem is that this is amended to to go back to town manager uh, for review.
And I have no problem with that. If you'd like me to amend it, simply what he said, that this would go back to the town manager. Uh, consider instructing the town manager to, to take a look at a capital improvement bond and and uh, I guess how to pay for it, a debt exclude, exclusion or two-and-a-half override or just to study what, what the impact would be on their taxes. Not quite sure how to say the amendment, but
I think
my best. I'm just trying to get the roads fixed.
Uh, I I appreciate it, Council. I think it's a great discussion. I I think uh, maybe a, in a form of uh, an amendment simply to say, vote that the full council instructs town manager um,
To study a capital?
To review, to review all available funds and potential funded mechanisms for a road improvement plan and present to council within sixty days.
That's fine. So moved.
Second. I'll let Gus second.
Counsel Dow, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'll go back to Counsel Dow cuz I missed him before.
I agree, whatever you guys decide to do, but we need to Pacific, say, if you wanna raise that or whatever for the road. Not to be like, uh, Counsel Adam saying, this year you use it for the road, next year they use it somewhere else and we raise the tax again on the. On the citizen again and again, we just tell them we're gonna do the road and we we're not doing it, so. Uh, I think it should be Pacific or the the two and a half or whatever you guys. Uh, you're gonna get that fund, it should be Pacific for the road only. Thank you.
And I I think that my amended motion, I think, makes that kind of a point, that it would be for the roads, correct? Um, is there any discussion on the amendment, Counsel Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, kind of dovetail with it, what Counsel Dow just said, is that I think if. And pending, obviously, what what Town Manager McCall discovers as far as what the legal elements of it are. I I would imagine that if we phrase the ballot question properly, we could make sure we designate it to that specific purpose. Um, but that that will come forward whenever we get to that point. It's a little premature to talk about that right now. Until we actually see what the data is and what we what we can actually do. Yeah, I mean, I know, I'm not a lawyer either, so I don't know.
Counsel Jovan, if I may. It's Melissa.
Go ahead, Melissa.
So the rules on override. If you do a debt exclusion, it is only for the purpose of the borrowing. If you do a debt override, the designated purpose is used in the first year and is a permanent increase. To the tax rate and then two and a half is built on top of that going forward. Um, and um, the only way to change that is to do an override vote later on. So it is a permanent change with a designated pers- purpose in the first year. And there's often, um, when you do something like that, a a a long term. A six to ten year plan as to what you're really going to use that for. However, it is not um limited in the same way that a debt exclusion for a specific bonding purpose is.
So we could use the Bay Path money then for anything?
No, cuz. Bay Path, I don't think is a, was a debt.
Bay Path? That was a two and a half override.
No, that was a debt exclusion.
I don't wanna get hung up on that. I think that the amendment is fine and I uh, I'm fine with it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Roll call on the amendment?
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
And Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Okay, motion, uh, the amendment is carried. Counsel Marquetti, just to that point. There are debt exclusions, just like the school was a debt exclusion, even though is, I know we didn't do the school, uh, Bay Path School is a a a debt exclusion, so. But we can talk about that in the overall conversation.
I'd like to thank the Congress for supporting this.
Yeah, roll call on the uh, motion as amended.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
And Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Our motion carries. Item twenty, Counsel's Forum, Counsel Ryan?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counsel Steves?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of points. Um, one is I wanted to ask, uh. I noticed in the town manager's report, or this week's weekly report, the the first item from Karen mentions. Uh, the more information about the liquor board looking at license, about reducing or eliminating license fees. Hope you can give us some more details on that, of what you know about that at this point. I know it says that they're they're still discussing the issue, but. Do you know anything more about that?
Uh, the first I heard about this earlier this week was talking with Karen Harnoys, she said that this was gonna be a question coming up, I think. With the licensing board, um, and that was relative to the situation that they've been placed in due to the phased reopening in the Commonwealth. Whereas Russell has had uh some success in partial reopening. Some of the uh license establishments, especially with the full liquor license, have not been opened. Uh, have been unable to open and generate any revenue, so. Understanding was there was going to be a discussion about whether or not there would be. Either a a change in the license fee or prorated.
Okay, thank you. Um, also, I notice, I don't know if if uh either if you can answer this, Mr. McCall or Karen or. Cuz I noticed that um Rosemary is not, doesn't seem to be on the call. Uh, but in her in her section of the report, under the Southridge Innovation Center section, she mentions that. The um W D B C advised me that the E D, the federal government, the E D A, has not invited the town to apply. Because they're questioning the ownership situation of the A O. Um, could you be more, could you clarify that, anybody? What exactly that means?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Counsel Steves, I have, I have a scheduled meeting this week with um. Uh, Rosemary to go over in a department head meeting in an operational review, I can raise that question with her. Um, I have yet to meet with her, so I don't have any background on that particular issue.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the the one more item, well, two more items, actually, no, just one. Um, is that I had emailed Heather about water concerns, uh, but I guess it was Saturday, so I know you weren't there at the time, I don't know if you've had a chance to see it. But I don't know if if people who have noticed the fact that the water levels are so low now. I mean, her report mentions that the reservoirs are down in the seventy percent range, the seventy seven, the lower than eighty percent range. And I noticed that walking down by Lebanon Brook, um, there's literally no water flowing to the book anymore. It's like dry in most places. Um, there's still pools and stuff and rocks and things like that, and there's a couple of trickles in a couple of places, but it doesn't go anywhere. And so I was wondering, um, what what? I was thinking we might wanted to figure out what we're gonna do about that, cuz I think in the long term, that may be an issue, of course. Hopefully, the rain in the next couple days may make that a moot issue, but given what we've seen with storms. Um, we've had, it didn't come close to addressing the actual need that we have. So I don't know if there's any particular policy or practice or uh, I what's what I want? Um, any particular uh procedure by which. We may wanna consider having town, unfortunately, having a town's watering bans and things like that. Considering the water levels are really, really low at this point. Just an observation, it's such a policy, I don't know if anybody can answer that, Heather, maybe? Heather?
Um, yes, so I will tell you that the water department has been looking into different options. Um, at this point, a watering ban probably isn't going to make a huge impact because we're getting already into the month, um, October and most people. Kind of already deciding that, you know, at this point, they're not watering their lawns or watering their gardens as much anyways. Um, I know you suggested, and I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to reply, but of maybe not allowing it for food and things of that nature. The one thing that we are considering, and we've been talking, and I will get more information out to the council, is not doing our flushing. This fall and only flushing for purposes of dressing targeted complaint areas or color areas or concern areas instead of our. Um, system wide flushing, which will. You know, a considerable amount of water, um, so that is a plan that we've been talking about internally, um, I will get you. Confirmation that that is what we're going to do, but that is what we've talked about internally, is not doing our flushing plan, which will help save us. Um, with some water at that point. We are still operating on Reservoir Five, which means Reservoir Four. Three and four are still full, um, they are still transitioning back into what we call good quality water. They're not quite there yet, um, there's a, they're still quite warm from the summer. And the, and given the fact that there hasn't been a lot of turnover, so. We, um, although our overall capacities are going down, we still do have a a large amount of water in our reservoirs. Um, what you're seeing in Lebanon Brook is just a, it's it's less of a. Overall of our watershed of um, of just everything, all the little tributaries are starting to dry up everywhere. Um, but um, the one, the biggest thing, the way we're looking at addressing it right now, is only doing targeted color complaints. Flushing, um, and do, and so foregoing our normal fall flushing program.
Okay, thank you.
All set?
Um, I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Counsel Dow, you're next?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I wanna thank Heather's, uh, one of the citizens was complaining of some uh item on the sidewalk. Is being left over. Uh, she take care of him right away. Thank you very much, Heather. Uh, the other thing, uh, ladder residents asked me about the R M V, uh, the motor vehicle. Uh, we have any feedback, uh, Mr. Town Manager on the motor vehicle, what the status of. Uh, it's staying, leaving, uh, it's gonna reopen, any uh information on that?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, through you to Counsel Dow, I have reached out to Mass D O T. I believe I may have put some of it into an email, I I spoke to Representative Durant about it the other day as well. Um, working with Heather Blakely and her staff. I believe there was an H V A C consultant out there today to look at what needs to be done in order to. Meet the D P H requirements that the R M V will need, at least to uh work on a twelve month extension. But the, in the larger picture, we're we're looking to make sure that we get the ten year renewal. And that's what I talked to Representative Durant about, so uh uh as the information comes in, uh, I will keep you posted.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
And, Mr. Town Manager, thank you for following up with the legislators on that, cuz I know it's gonna be a hot button issue if they do decide not to reopen. But thank you for your work on that. Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things through you to the Town Manager. Um, thank you for the email recently, Mr. Town Manager, can you tell us, um, why? We have two police officers resigning? Is that something you can share with us?
If I can, Mr. Chairman, I I know that the the police chief is on the call, he just turned his video on, I don't know. It'd be best for him to explain, um, he and I did have a conversation about the matter the other week, but he has the details if he's inclined to. Um, take the question, he's more than welcome, but I can give you some limited details, he might be best to explain it.
Thank you. Right, do you want to refer to the chief? Chief, are you comfortable with answering? Chief?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Chair, thanks for having me tonight, members of the council, Mr. Town Manager. Just, um, Counsel Katrona, real quick on that. One resignation was probably a month ago, it was a police officer that we hired as lateral transfer from Palmer. He had about four or five years in the job in Palmer. I knew he was gonna be, you know, what we call a short timer for our department, but we paid nothing to get him, we did not train him. He showed up on our doorstep and needed about a week of training and he was out in the street. He worked for us for about three years. And when he first came on our job, again, I don't wanna minimize uh his role, but we kinda considered him a. Short term fix to fill a hole that we had in the schedule. And I knew because he was very out, you know, right out front with me from the very beginning that he had family in Florida. And he went from basically, and I think I said this at one of our meetings, a thirty eight man police department to a three thousand man sheriff's office in Florida. So he moved down there with his family and his in-laws, and that is a huge lifestyle change. Um, I've got a letter of resignation from him and we did an exit interview with him. Uh, to prove that it was not, nothing to do with the town of Southbridge, the pay scale, the police department, the community, nothing like that, it's just a lifestyle change. That that was the first one. There's actually three, Counsel Katrona. You know, kinda the next one, I can only talk about certain things, um, legally, but I'll I'll do my best to inform everybody. Um, the next one is a thirteen year veteran of the police department. He chose to resign and the only thing that I can say is. Uh, you can ask him why he resigned, or, you know, better yet, ask him to see a copy of um. All of his exit paperwork when he left, and I I can, I have to leave it at that, unfortunately. And that's a very, it's a personnel issue, I don't wanna delve into those waters, that was a um. A serious issue that was addressed rather quickly, and I I give credit to my um. To to the administrative staff that I have for making that happen so quickly. The third one, uh, Counsel Katrona, was the candidate that you, the council had in front of you, um, on September fourteenth at a council meeting. This was the candidate back in February that withdrew at the last minute. Um, number one on our list, Marine Corps disabled war veteran. Could not get around this candidate, they pulled out a few days before the academy in February, I gave that candidate a second chance, that's on me. Um, I was given a second chance when I was a kid and I think it worked out pretty good. Uh, the second chance that I gave this candidate did not work out so good for us, for the community, and and that's my fault, no one else's. Uh, they came in a couple days after they were appointed, they had said that they did not wanna be a police officer, there was another medical concern. But I will say, nothing to do with the department, nothing to do with the community, because that person still works for us. In a full time capacity as a dispatcher, so they just policing wasn't for them. And now that candidate, you know, and I I know it's easy for me to kinda gloss over um civil service things and rules, but that candidate. The town was in a very tough position, because when they withdrew the first time around, they were still number one on our list. And this this next time around, they could have held up the hiring process for a year or two, um, if they weren't provided that second opportunity. So part of it was me, second chance, I take the hit on that, and the other part of me was the town was in a poor position. So we had to at least offer them or extend them another conditional offer of employment, that did not work out. Now going forward, that candidate will not sign in on the list, and now based what it is, uh, Counsel Katronas, I do not have to. Um, justify why I'm bypassing that candidate now, they just won't sign in, so they don't count as being on the list. So those are the three vacancies, or the three issues in our department over the last month or so.
Thank you, Chief, for for the explanation, I, please don't ever, don't take responsibility for 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 that, I know we've, this council's worked. Very hard to bring um all our safety staff, yourself included, um, up to full speed and um. I hope you put names before us as quickly as you possibly can, you know, for confirmation. Thank you very much.
Just like, I don't wanna keep keep the council here all night, but, so, yes, Counsel Katrona, we, there'll be two more uh names coming forward. And the reason why there's only two is because that third vacancy, they're in the academy now, they started. Right after Officer Raymond left for Florida, so we have one in the police academy now that will not be out till. You know, Christmas, New Years, and then we have two more that I'll hopefully be bringing at least to P P P and get um your opinions and thoughts on that at that point.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I can just continue, a couple, a couple more quick things, um. Recently, I I had the opportunity to uh to be downtown, which for me, um, I I was able to walk. Take a quick walk, I just wanna say thank you to the to the Central Street Project, um. Uh, to peg to Rosemary D P W volunteers, to everyone, I I had the opportunity to look around and it just, it it. All the struggles I know this council went through and previous councils, it just, it looks wonderful, maybe in the future when things. Ease up, um, with COVID. Maybe we could, the town could possibly look at craft fairs or or farmers markets there, something, it's it's, and I hope more of the community get to. Spend some time there and and see the the benches and just it it it, I think it's really bringing the the center core of the town together. Uh, one more thing, I I did get a phone call uh from a resident, um, I I I'm not sure she didn't tell me if I could mention her name, so I'm, I I won't. But um, I I wanna assure her, she's an elderly resident, and anyone else out there that has any concerns. Um. Um, if Harrington Hospital i- is is here, it's in town, it's not closing, if they currently go to their healthcare providers. Um, yes, U Mass is is, um, they're committed to run Harrington Hospital. Um, and the Webster Campus, uh, but. Um, Harrington patients, um, that they should continue to see their their healthcare providers. And uh, uh, it's their outstanding academical medical center, a- and and I think it's a clear positive for our community, so. Something that I think gets started and just snowballs, when people start talking, you know, they're gonna lose their their healthcare providers and that's not the case at all. We're very fortunate to have uh U Mass come into this community, um, a- and I certainly look forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's all I have.
Thank, thank Counsel, Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I did receive a um, a phone call from constituent. And I did bring it to the town manager and the police chief about speeding on the Everett Street. Um, he said that he, this person called me. Um, he said that he, he, this person called me last year actually, and I brought it forward. And, uh, he tells me that continues a lot of speeding on Everett Street. There's a sign there for speeding. Um, that doesn't really work. I drive on Everett Street all the time. It is a very congested street, parking on both sides. Uh, somebody's gonna get, uh, seriously hurt there with cars, if cars are speeding on that street, because you really can't see anybody jumping up between those cars. Uh, this person told me that he did tell somebody to slow down and they just flip them the bird and keep going. So something needs to be done on Everett Street. I don't have the answer for what it should, what should happen there, but something needs to happen on, on that street. Um, like I said, the sign does not work, the speeding sign. Uh, I went by there today. It wasn't working. I don't know what it is with Everett Street. But, uh, that's where I get the calls from.
Uh, Mr. Counsel Marquetti, the chief?
If he wants to respond, that's fine.
Chief Wilson?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Counsel Marquetti, I do appreciate the email that I get from you. Um, you know, we have been working on it. We've had an issue with that sign, but I know we kind of went back and forth about, um, having somebody assign down there, so I did. And we had a police officer, and I'm just looking at a text I got for him on Thursday. He was down there for three hours. He was working between, between the hours of ten and six. He was down there for three hours for three days in a row. And the fastest speed in that area was thirty-six. The majority of the people were high twenties and low thirties. He's telling me, and he's our traffic enforcement officer, he's the resident expert, that he believes that a lot of cars appear that they're going faster because of the, the, the closed nature of that, you know, with the multifamily dwellings, cars parked on both sides of the street. And even some that he saw approaching that he thought were going a lot faster than they really were. And once he clocked them, they were only going six, seven miles an hour over the speed limit. Uh, we have a zero tolerance approach down there because of honestly, not only your concerns, but several other people have called us about Everett Street. So we're gonna continue to work on that. And what I'll do, um, Counsel Marquetti, is, you know, every other week or so, I'll just shoot you an update, just so you can, you know, keep the constituents informed of what we're trying to get accomplished down there.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I'd also like to say that, uh, when, when you, you were talking about the police officers that resigned, and you said, uh, that if, if we wanted to, uh, talk to one of them, that we could just ask them, but if you, so if you want to shoot me an email with the names of the police officers who resigned, because I know you probably shouldn't talk about it in a public forum like this. But if you want to shoot me their names, that's fine. I don't have a problem talking to them about their reasons for resigning. Uh, the last thing I wanted to say is that I saw the Big Bunny sign up, and I just want to say that that sign looks really nice. And I'm glad we supported that. I was, when they first put that up, I was concerned about how that was gonna look, but, uh, looks really fine, really good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Hey, hey, Counsel Marquetti. I agree with you on that sign, uh. The, uh, I think when I saw the proposal, I can do it justice to what it was actually gonna come out with, and they did a very nice job. It looks very nice. Um, Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to caveat off of, of, uh, what, um, Counsel Marquetti said about Everett Street. Um, I'll talk to Chief Wilson on the, on the side about it. On some of the concerns that, uh, this one resident had talked about and maybe bring it to the Traffic Commission, uh, for a review. Um, I do want to thank the chief for being an honest broker about these three individuals. Um, and as much as he can speak about it, I do appreciate taking ownership of situation. And, you know, um, that's, to me, that's true leadership when, uh, individuals, it's, it's the uncomfortable conversations that have to be had sometimes. And, uh, you know, you get the benefit of, of getting the kudos when good things go well, and you get the benefit of, of receiving sometimes backlash when things don't always, uh, go well. So I just wanted to say thanks, say thanks to the chief, and I appreciate being honest. And, uh, I believe most of the, I believe with department heads have been very honest with anything that has, has been happening, uh, to the best of their ability. Uh, to Counsel Katrona, I just wanted to say the Central Street, I've been talking to Zachary, uh, Levert, who's the Agricultural Commission Chair about doing the, uh, crafts fair and the farmer's market as well. So I appreciate all the hard work they have done over there and, uh, glad you got the chance to go down there. Uh, Mr. Town Manager, I just want to say thank you for constantly following up on, if it's not an email from me, but just following up with the town council on things that, uh, we haven't seen in a long time. So I really, really appreciate that. And the forward thinking that you, you already shown uh, less than a month into this position. So I appreciate that. Thank you. And I know, again, I'll always say, you get the firehouse effect the first thirty days and um, it, it's coming fast and furious, but seems like you handled it really well, and I appreciate that and the, the great conversation so far. Um, I do want to say to, to, to the chair, maybe to the town manager, I do, I would like, I would still would like to see that a brief from the town manager, the accountant and treasurer down the road, uh, about the receipts for our town for twenty twenty-one. Uh, or for, for this, actually for this fiscal year, and see where we're at as a town, um, uh, with the income coming in. So I look forward to that brief down the road, uh, from you guys. And last thing is, um, happy birthday, United States Navy. They turned two hundred four, forty-five years old on October thirteenth, and I wish all the, uh, my sailor buddies, um, a happy birthday. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And to your question, Counsel Adams, I do know, uh, Ms. Harnoy has requested a presentation on the audit for next, uh, next week's, uh, meeting. So if they have some numbers perhaps that they can put together, at least a brief update, um, at that point. So I will follow up with the town manager on, on that. So maybe they can incorporate that into this presentation. Um, Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I'd like to thank Counsel Marquetti and his subcommittee for, uh, lighting a little fire under us. I think that we have been saying that roads are an issue, and he and his committee, uh, decided to do something about it, and I genuinely appreciate that. And I think the citizens in town appreciate that as well. As a result of his and his committee's instigations, we have a definite plan in place so that hopefully there'll be a nice Christmas present for us and we'll be able to move forward with what's, uh, with what should be a nice project and plan moving forward. So, uh, my genuine thank you to he and his committee for, uh, getting us going. And with that.
Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome. With that, I'd like to say that our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, October fifth, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Thank you. There's motion a second, roll call?
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel.
Yes. Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
And Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Thank you and have a good evening.
Night off.
Thank you, everyone.